Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the board. We have one of our students who'd like to just say a few words of welcome. Reagan, come on down.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Board of Education and guests. Every student at Hamilton Avenue School learns to play a string instrument. On behalf of our entire school, we thank the board for all the support you have given this program. We would like to thank Hamilton Avenue's Principal Fox and Vice Principal Simonelli for being here tonight, as well as Laura Newell, our music and arts coordinator. We really appreciate how supportive you've been all over these years. On stage, you will see students from Ham Ave, Western Middle School, and Greenwich High School. We began the performance of French folk song and would like to perform one more piece for you. It is a variation on Twinkle.
Thank you.
All right. Start the meeting? Start the meeting. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, when a nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, I think I share the sentiment of the of the board, but that was really, really nice and very pretty and a true testament to Greenwich's support of the the arts. Thank you. Sorry, it's been a really long day. All right, so let's get started before I stumble over some more words. We have the Connecticut High School Outstanding Arts Award by Ms. Fascaldo. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the board. My name is Bethany Fascaldo, and I am the orchestra teacher at Greenwich High School, and I'm thrilled to be here to celebrate our amazing students this evening. The Connecticut High School Outstanding Arts Award annually honor two seniors from each cast member high school who excel in the performing or visual arts and possess qualities of leadership and scholarship. This year's recipients from Greenwich High School are Jack Glass and Luca Dolgov. Jack can't be here this evening because he is the lead in Oklahoma, happening right now. But Jack has demonstrated a keen interest in a high level of excellence in all aspects of theater. He has exemplified outstanding artistic commitment and impressive ability to work well with everyone, a strong leadership style in mentoring other students, and the personal depth to bring meaning and humanity to his roles. Jack has been an outstanding and prolific writer for three years in the production of original works for theater written by students called Magic Circle. In addition, he is a gifted and passionate improv performer. Next year, Jack will be attending Dartmouth College. Luca possesses the rare combination of innate talent, musical sensitivity, and a tireless work ethic on the viola. The dedication to his craft is evident in his willingness to go above and beyond to help others and contribute positively to the musical community in Greenwich. While at GHS, Luca was accepted into the Western Region all four years and All-State Orchestra the past three years. Most notably, this past January, Luca was selected to serve as the principal violist in the Western Region Orchestra, and in March, his string quartet made up of fellow GHS string players performed at Lincoln Center in New York City. Next year, Luca will be attending Yale University. Please join me in congratulating these two exceptional young men.
All right. Okay, now you have All-State Musicians. Back from
I wasn't sure why you sat down, so it confused me for a minute.
Sorry. It's my pleasure to introduce to you for recognition the finest young musicians from the Greenwich High School Music Department this year. More than 1,000 vocalists and instrumentalists from every public and private high school in Connecticut audition each year for the four All-State Performing Ensembles: Band, Chorus, Jazz Band, and Orchestra. This is a two-stage process with a first round of auditions in November and a second round in February. The students honored here this evening have spent many years working hard to become fine musicians. And although it is primarily their own passion and dedication that has led them to this impressive achievement, their efforts have been well supported by their parents and families, by our exceptionally strong K-12 music faculty, by our school administration, and by our Board of Education, all of which place a high priority on the arts. I am pleased to present the 26 outstanding musicians who were selected to represent Greenwich High School in this year's All-State Music Festival, which took place in Hartford at the end of March. As I call your name, please come to the front to be congratulated by the superintendent and board chair and remain here until everyone has been called up. Please hold your applause until I have called everyone up. Thank you. Angela Bay on clarinet. Greg Bound, voice. Ethan Cooper, voice. Luca Dolgov, viola. Annabelle Edgell, voice. Thomas Aronson, voice. Avery Gary, voice. Beatrice Healy, voice. Miu Ito, voice. Momokobayashi, violin. Yoonoo Cook, voice. Cindy Lee, voice. Joe Nagai, voice. Sebastian Ojeda, voice. Luke Avzag, voice. Alexis Palanca, voice. Madeline Phillips, voice. Alexander Robles, voice. Ian Shum, oboe. Henan Stern, oboe. Yuta Takahashi, voice. Benjamin Vargis, voice. Lydia Wang, voice. Kate Wick, viola. And Jacob Winston, voice. And Harrison Wolf, tuba. Congratulations to you all.
Well, congratulations to all. That's outstanding. Now we have our comments. Can we have Caleb and Omar for the student government comments for the evening? Coming down to the wire. You only have one more meeting after this.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and members of the board. My name is Omar Galal, and I'm the Student Body Vice President at GHS. At long last, the end of the school year is on the horizon, and GHS students are working harder than ever. Advanced placement examinations began on May 6th and end tomorrow. I have an exam tomorrow on May 17th. These tests are akin to final exams for students enrolled in AP courses. Also, tomorrow's the last day of school for the majority of seniors. Starting next Monday, May 20th, most seniors will either work on internships or work on a senior project. The Senior Options Program ends right before graduation on June 14th. Spring athletics are in full swing. The regular seasons are wrapping up, but teams are now entering the postseason. Most notably, the boys tennis team is having a phenomenal season. Head Coach Ray Marshall's boys are on a tear and have a 16-0 record this season, which means they haven't lost a regular season match all season, but they actually haven't, they also haven't lost a regular season match since 2022. So very impressive. Keeping an eye out for their playoff run where they have the opportunity to win consecutive FCAC chips and consecutive state championships. I actually think they may have won the semifinal for the FCAC earlier today. So that's, we're all rooting for them. I noticed that there's an action item on the agenda related to GHS's food options. So it is important then that I reiterate the student government's stance on food services policy. We propose programs such as the National School Lunch Program that provide subsidies to schools that abide by nutritional requirements. This year, we observed that the nutritional requirements decreased portion sizes and limited the variety of options, including the muffins, the muffin scandal. They limited the variety of options the cafeteria could offer, which in turn decreased the popularity of the cafeteria servings amongst the student body. I cannot say for certain, but the decrease in popularity may or may not have a correlation with food sales. So please keep these implications in mind later tonight. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you and have a great evening.
Good evening, Chair Kowalski, Dr. Jones, and members of the board. I am Caleb Kalind, the Student Body President of Greenwich High School. Tonight, I have some updates on senior events and student government elections. Students at GHS have been studying hard for their recent AP exams, as Omar has said. These exams are important to many students as it allows them to have another source of the display of their academic strength, as well as giving credit or allowing them to opt out of certain classes in college. Students generally seem to be taking these exams well and are well-prepared by their teachers to succeed. As some of you may know, National College Commitment Day was yesterday, and we were able to see the many of the decisions that our seniors have made for their postgraduate plans. We've had a very strong class this year with many acceptances from top schools and a majority of people going to a four-year college or university next year. Before heading off for the summer, the majority of our seniors will be getting, will be beginning an internship or project for the next four weeks. And while many are saddened by the departure of our seniors this Friday, we are preparing to embark on an internship or project that can be both impactful for our stories as well as experience in fields that we are interested in. It serves as a great opportunity for many to confirm their interest in a certain area or in other cases, help them realize that they may not be as interested as they thought they were. Prom and graduation come after this internship or project, and we are excited to bring ESPN journalist Zach Lowe to be our guest speaker to graduation this year. Prospective student government candidates have begun their campaigns as they begin to put out flyers and craft their speeches. With 25 candidates across three grades, we're confident that student government will continue to be in good hands, especially considering the change electoral process. Within, for the next two weeks, students will continue to campaign, and following this, there will be a virtual student body presidential debate during advisor base and then followed by great specific speeches in our Performing Arts Center. I am excited to bring our new student body officers the next time we meet. And though Omar and I will miss our fellow underclassmen, our teachers, our teachers, and student government in general, we will still be around to give our final remarks to you at the next meeting. That is all I have for now, and I look forward to sharing some updates on student government elections next month. Thank you all for your time and have a great evening.
Thanks, Caleb. Comments by GEA, Lil Perron. Don't have props. Okay, bad teacher. I passed out paper and props before my speech. No one's gonna pay attention. All right. Hello, my name's Lilian Perron, in case you don't know, president of the largest union in Greenwich. Chairwoman Kowalski, Superintendent, my GEA friends and teachers, friends, community, students in the audience. Thank you, Ham Ave, for that beautiful performance of the strings. So here's the goodie bag. So I was going over the board docs last night, and I noticed there were four video presentations, so quite long, because it was movie night. So there is your snacks. In case you didn't watch your videos, you take that home with you. You can trade them. Some are healthy, some are not, but enjoy. All right, so in reading, this is a very large agenda, so I'll get right to the point for tonight. Two points of interest that I was interested in, the CAC report and preschool. Although it refers to our special population, I see that it fits in every body of our of our school. There was a common theme that I found. Staffing, staffing, and staffing. Because staffing of all kinds, teachers, trained paras, qualified subs, psychologists, SLPs, CLDs, eval team, and many other support staff, impact all student learning in the classroom. I've read the CAC Committee Recommendation. It is a very well-written, detailed, oriented report with viable solutions and action plans, which GEA has been advocating all this year. Four key points. Staffing model, para support, staff well-being, and climate, and real and relevant PD. Staffing models are very important. It's not one size fits all. It's not workload, but we have to pay attention in the report as it says to hours, impact hours. So for example, if elementary teacher has 22.5 instructional hours and you have students that need support, you have to look into their actual hours of services. So if you have five or six students and their hours of service add up to more than 22.5, that could be a problem. So it's not just one-to-one. You really have to look at the whole picture. Para support and training, so important. They are with our most needed students with the needed support, our paras need to be trained. They need to be supportive. They need to be treated like professionals and have time to collaborate. Staff well-being and climate across the different district. It's not news. We have a teacher shortage. We have a sub shortage. We have a parish shortage. That's not gonna get any better, folks. Real and relevant PD. So I'll address this the last one, but I want to talk a little bit, I'll go back to that, talk a little bit about preschool. The same goes for preschool, the staffing model, very important. Well-done presentation, but I did notice in the slide on where it states one certified staff and three PAs, professional assistants. I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want people to think that it's three full-time assistants. It's one full-time and two part-time assistants. So as I said before, here's the challenge that I put out to the Board of Ed, the community. This is not gonna go away. We have a very, very business-oriented community, and I hope that we can come up with a plan. This is supply and demand. Every district is looking for substitutes, for paras, for qualified teachers. What can we come up with to attract them, to come down to the farthest end of the state, Greenwich, from other areas? We have to be creative. We have to be resilient. We have to attract and retain. So I put that challenge out to everyone. We need to work together to come up with ways to attract and retain incentives, anything that we could think of, because it's not gonna get better, and we need those supports. We don't have the important supports in the classroom, no matter what classroom, general ed, special ed. It impacts every student. It impacts the well-being of the teachers. It impacts the well-being of everyone. Thank you. PTA Council.
Chair Kowalski, BOE members, Superintendent Dr. Jones, everyone here, everyone listening. I'm John Fisher, the Greenwich PTA Council President and the parent of two of the 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools. I want to start by saying congratulations to those arts award recipients earlier and the musicians and the Ham Ave string ensemble, I guess it is. What an amazing group of musicians. The PTA Council also expresses hearty congratulations to all the great GHS seniors as they're finishing up their AP testing this week and wrapping up their Greenwich Public Schools experience. We couldn't be more amazed with what they've accomplished over the last 12, 13, 14 years, and we wish them great success in their next adventure. We also celebrate the eighth graders' Washington DC field trips, which come to a close this week. A wonderful experience that marks a successful closing of their middle school years and the opening of their next great adventure at GHS. The PTA Council is pleased that the RTM ratified without contention, the school budgets at the BOE and then the BET approved. As you all know, PTAC advocated for a slightly higher operating budget, but we see this as a success for the town. I'm sure I speak for all of us and especially for Mr. Kittle when I say that we look forward to getting started on next year's budget. We will be looking for a similar degree of success or perhaps some more for the good of the students and the schools, and perhaps so that we can continue to work on those staffing issues that Lil talked about. We also want to thank the board members, Ms. Kowalski, Ms. Hirsch, and Ms. Costin for speaking at the Tree Hearing yesterday and continuing to advocate on behalf of the CMS building project and doing what needs to be done to keep that on time and on budget. We'll add one more thank you to the BOE, the administration, and the teacher who stepped forward to make an in-person Latin class a reality at GHS for the next year. Tonight's agenda is full of interesting discussion items, and we look forward to hearing those. On the action items, on behalf of Ham Ave PTA, we reiterate support for the approval of the St. Rock's use of the Ham Ave Fields or school grounds for the festival that the community loves. And we also support the elimination of flex time and the ever-so-slightly-longer instruction time in every class. And we recognize that the minutes do add up. The school and district administration have work ahead of them with the elimination of flex time to address the concerns that the student leaders have brought forward about ensuring students have time and access to extra help and to clubs and to other activities, to address the concerns that have been raised about extra test time for the students that need it, and to address the concerns about traffic impacts when all of the students, especially the seniors, leave all at once instead of sneaking out during flex time, and they all stampede out of that parking lot, turning onto Hillside and into the oncoming stampede of parents who will all simultaneously be coming in to pick up their students. We wish the administration good luck with that. And with that, thank you for this time to speak, and thank you for your service to the community.
All right, now we're starting our community comments for the evening. First up, we have Hadrian Nobay, and the next is Jackie Holman.
Hello, I'm Hadrian Nobay, and I'm a 10th grader here at GHS, well, not here. I go to a lot of flex clubs, and I use flex time to meet with teachers and to do homework nearly every day. It's a really important time for me and my fellow students, but this flex proposal has a number of problems. One of the things that this proposal doesn't really understand is why students leave flex. It provides a statistic, for example, that 955 students are excused from flex, but many students need to participate in community service, other extracurriculars, and go to doctors, especially when doctors aren't often not open on weekends or after school. Removing flex times will simply force these students to miss instructional time, which will be a lot harder to make up for with the loss of a time block at the end of the day. It also doesn't really understand the traffic situation at GHS. Under this proposal, GHS, GCDS, GACMS, Brunswick, and a lot of other schools will release at the same time, creating congestion issues. We were able to manage this in the past, yes, but in the past, GHS start time was earlier, and this is no longer the case. Flex time is not the same as an open, since it's at the same time for everyone. Students can better leverage it to communicate with their instructors. Without it, when students miss tests or assignments due to field trips, illness, or anything else, these students simply won't be able to make up work without being forced to stay after school, many without a ride home. But the part of this proposal that least understands student needs, especially students like me, is the side part on clubs. Many clubs are simply unable to meet after school. More casual clubs like chess More casual clubs like Chess Club, one of the most popular clubs at the school, would have trouble finding both students and advisors willing to stay after school. Every club requires a paid teacher advisor to run. And while a club may fall under the fifty minute wraparound time, this is firstly, under the teacher's discretion, not the clubs, and secondly, conflicts with potential academic time for teachers. This proposal suggests attending club meetings virtually, but this is a misunderstanding of the purpose of a club. Would you ask the golf team or the swim team to meet virtually for practice? Of course not. Being together in a space provides a vital place for community to build trust and it's an integral part of this town's goals for students. In essence, this proposal would destroy a pretty vital part of the GHS student community in favor of two minutes extra class time per block. If the BOE really wants to solve the flex problem, you should give students a place to go during flex time. The student center closes most days at three oh five, leaving students wandering the halls and like was said earlier, simply leaving without GHS knowing where they are. Instead of costing the GHS community their time, their sense of unity, we should simply, we should simply focus on the root causes like the early closing of the student center and the difficult to manage flex attendance system that's entirely separate from other attendance systems to make time more effective rather than making the school time worse. Thank you for your time.
Jackie Holman and next up is Abby Clark.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Jones. Three years ago, I came here with yellow posters showing examples of progressive curriculum found in Greenwich classrooms. White privilege, systemic racism, radical gender ideology, and the library books. At the time, Superintendent Jones had administrators participate in a guided reading of White Fragility by a critical race theorist, Robin DiAngelo, and even told a group of student activists that she intended to make Greenwich an anti racist school district. Anti racism sounds nice to the untrained ear, but it represents an ugly, insidious racist agenda that is a far cry from our collective goal of embracing equality for all. Instead, it calls for future discrimination to atone for past discrimination. One of my posters warned about students being turned into social justice warriors by educators who follow the guidance of the Teachers Union in the district, the National Education Association, or NEA for short. I've asked Dr. Jones and the BOE how they intend to keep the NEA's radical ideas out of the classroom. For instance, the NEA's June Conference is about racial and social justice, where attendees can learn even more about incorporating anti racist teaching equity and delivering social justice lessons in the classroom. The NEA Conference also has a session on how to decolonize the curriculum, a revisionist history lesson from the sixteen nineteen project, and it celebrates Brazilian Paulo Ferreira, a Marxist credited with redefining literacy through critical consciousness. That's also known as Critical Race Theory or CRT. When I complain about GPS indoctrinating students with CRT, Superintendent Jones lies to me. She tells me it's not happening in Greenwich, despite the evidence that shows it is indeed happening. In some cases, these equity initiatives are endorsed or even mandated by the state. That's how I know they're happening. Now, it seems you'll be using equity and social justice as ways to measure the performance of educators. The documents in the meeting notice for tonight included the GPS Reflection, Goal Setting, and Action Document. This document shows the district plans to judge administrators on whether they collaborate to promote equity and to promote social justice and whether they allocate resources to ensure educational equity. What do these loaded words even mean? Can any of you define them for me? Can't we just get back to academics, actually teaching students how to think and not what to think? And can we hire educators with a demonstrated track record of academic excellence and not because they worked in a social justice school? Greenwich deserves better than this. We deserve a place of academic excellence, not a social justice training center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Abby Clark. And then Jessica Von Brockle on deck.
Thank you guys for having us. At the start of the year, PTAC Green School shared our annual district wide goals with you. Our efforts focused on strengthening the existing zero waste program, expanding the rollout of food scrap recycling program, as well as increasing awareness of environmental issues and local initiatives. Tonight, we would like to mention a few highlights, all made possible by our Green Schools volunteers at each school, our PTAC leadership and John Fisher, school administration, Facilities Department, Waste Free Greenwich, especially Julie DeChamps, the Conservation Commission and Rebecca Poirier, and our students.
So our first goal was to hold Green Team Meetings at all our schools to strengthen the existing lunch recycling program. So meetings were held in all eleven elementary schools, three middle schools, and a GHS. And in these meetings, we agreed to provide training, update signage, and focus on continual improvement. All elementary schools are set up with liquids, blue bin recycling, and trash. Nine of these schools have shared tables and two have food donation programs. So this approach alone results in about forty eight percent of materials being diverted away from trash. Our second goal was to roll out food scrap, food scrap collection at all elementary schools to expand on last year's pilot. Food scrap collection is now up and running in six of the elementary schools. So in the school lunchroom, food is actually the heaviest component in the waste. So by collecting food scraps for recycling on top of the liquids in the blue bin recycling, these six elementary schools are diverting an average of seventy four percent of materials away from trash in the lunchroom. So this program saves our town tipping fees, our schools can get compost back for their gardens, and students are learning about environmental stewardship and life cycles. The third goal was for each school to host an Earth Month event to raise awareness and celebrate environmental conservation. So Earth Day occurs in April, but the truth is that our green reps are working on initiatives all year. So for example, collection drives for markers, pens, crayons, batteries, beauty packaging, film, sneakers, cleats, solar eclipse glasses, plastic yard signs, book swaps, Halloween costume swaps, and textile and boot drives. There've been tree planting ceremonies, promotion of local parks, walk and bike to schools, cleaned up spaces, planting golden seeds, and learned about pollinators and life cycles. We've promoted waste free lunches, played games, and composted on site for school gardens. Schools have also brought in lots of external speakers, held morning announcements, and made beautiful bulletin awards, and made Earth Month resolutions, and hosted poster competitions. And then finally, our fourth goal was to promote monthly themes to raise awareness and connect with the local initiatives that are going on. Monthly flyers were promoted October through January. We hosted a free public seminar for the holidays and promoted a very full Earth Month calendar of local events this April. So in conclusion, we've really enjoyed an incredible year, which could not have been achieved without the time, many and many hours, effort and support from many, many people. And finally, I'd like to thank Angie for her incredible contribution, inspiring collaborative approach, and infinite supply of positive energy. Angie is transitioning out of her role, but we welcome Hillary Harper, who is joining me as PTAC co-chair next year.
Thank you.
Next up is Jessica Von Brockle.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica Von Brockle, I'm a teacher at Greenwich High School, but tonight I'm here as the parent of a Greenwich High School varsity baseball player. I'm also the big sister of a former GHS baseball captain. I just thought I should disclose that information. I'm here to keep the baseball field on your radar. I know you recall hearing from the amazing team captain Cody Baker back in December because it was evident that GPS had the boys in mind and wanted to give them the best season possible, given the circumstances. So first, thanks to all who helped get Havemeyer ready for play. It is a beautiful setting and the boys appreciate the work that was done to make the field not just playable, but home. And thank you to Mr. Giorgiou for getting the boys the equipment they needed. The team has been a total joy to watch. And if you haven't come to a game, the first FCAC playoff game is tomorrow and it might be our last home game, it's going to be nice out, I think. And so you should come and cheer on the boys. It's really beautiful. But I'm here because it's easy to enjoy the beautiful spring season and forget that having a tight plan for the GHS field is crucial to getting the team back to the GHS campus next spring. It's easy to forget that Havemeyer is an alternative and not the ultimate goal. We all know how construction projects and these field renovations can go. And I've heard there's a lot to do at GHS this summer. So we just want to make sure that GPS will keep an eye on the ball and make sure the field is sod or seed ready by the end of the summer. We also want to keep on top of plans for the JV and freshman teams and contingencies for circumstances like the ones that we face this school year. Given that Central wasn't really playable and isn't likely to be, we hope you'll maintain Havemeyer as a playable field and keep the fence and figure out a solution to getting dugouts to the field, whatever can be done to avoid a scramble at the start of the next season. So let's hope for the best, but plan for the worst. And please get the field finished early and maintain Havemeyer. And I'm just speaking for myself, not for the team, by the way. Go Cards.
Amy Luther.
Thank you.
Good evening, GPS, Dr. Jones, and esteemed board. I speak tonight in my public capacity as the PTAC Committee Co-Chair for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And inextricably linked to that, in my private capacity, as a resident of Greenwich, a parent of children in the public school system, and as an engaged citizen who's always concerned about how our kids, who are least advantaged and most vulnerable, are getting the support they need. As we approach the month of June, we look to honor two important designations, LGBTQ pride and Juneteenth. We are celebrating pride at Town Hall on June second and at one PM with our elected officials, religious and civic leaders, families and neighbors. Many LGBTQ students in our middle schools and high school are eager to get engaged. The First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee has organized a Juneteenth event on June nineteenth with speakers and a special performance. The First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee has also partnered with the Greenwich Historical Society in hosting another Juneteenth event on Saturday, June twenty second, from eleven to two, that promises to be truly special and geared towards the entire family. Volunteers are needed for its success. We are hopeful our students and their parents are able to participate this year and celebrate their families, culture, and allyship. And we appreciate the district stepping up to help get the word out about these significant events. That is a most welcome and important development from past years and helps resolve concerns which we've raised at BOE in the past two years. We know that somewhere between one in three and one in four young adults now identify as LGBTQ. And we know that they continue to face disproportionately high rates of bullying, discrimination, and violence. A report just out from the Trevor Project, a nonprofit focused on anti bullying and suicide prevention, showed that a heartbreaking thirty nine percent of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. And nearly half of those aged thirteen to seventeen experienced bullying in the past year. We have an opportunity to counter these negative trends with affirmative ones. As leaders, we must lean in as a community and support our students who are navigating an environment that isn't always safe or welcoming for them. We are excited by the students who've expressed interest in these events and in having safe spaces where they can be themselves, see themselves reflected, and where all can learn more about the history and diversity that makes this town and country special. Sorry. It's been my pleasure to co-chair the PTAC DEI Committee from its founding three years ago. Working together with representatives from the neighborhood schools, we recognize and advocate for all our students. Thank you for letting us highlight these two events at this meeting and we look forward to twenty twenty four and twenty five. And thank you for doing your part to help.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our community comments for the evening. We'll now move on to monthly reports. Dr. Jones, can you, your superintendent report is up next.
Thank you. I have just a couple of items. Obviously, the end of the year is coming very quickly. And you know, we're excited for all of the events that are going to happen in and around the district. So be sure when that Friday note comes out, we try to list everything that we can from the moving up ceremonies that are all across the district, as well as graduation. I also want to say congratulations to Mary Dolan Colette, who was named yesterday as the new Assistant Principal at Riverside. And that community was very excited, very well received. Also, just a very special thank you for everybody that works with our staff, our students, but SBA, NGSS, our AP testing. It is a tremendous amount of organization that has to take place, not just from the schedule itself, but just managing that. And having done that in one of my prior roles, it was probably one of the most stressful things because in your mind, you're thinking there's some like jail you go to if you mess up on a state test and it's it's really stressful. And so thank you to everybody that works with that. I also want to say a very special thanks to our legislators who worked incredibly hard for us this year in Hartford. And you know, I probably, you know, since I've been in Connecticut, I guess this would be probably nine years. This has to be one of the strongest groups where not a week went by where I wasn't getting a call, connecting, okay, where where is the district on this issue? And just a couple of things that they really stayed connected. Science of Reading was a big discussion through legislation this year. Also, I think the CMS project, literally weekly calls, making sure all the right paperwork, you know, was turned in. And then to get to twenty percent reimbursement, I think it was like, it was pretty amazing. So we're just very happy about that. The other thing was the racial balance and pausing that. I did send the board, I believe, a note yesterday. So we were going to have to do an amendment, you know, by the end of summer. Now that's on pause for at least a year. And and that's very helpful for us as well. And last but not least, we will also be having our seniors when they start their internships. And they'll be all over our schools, all out in their schools. And a lot of them actually go back to their elementary school where they went as a child. And it's wonderful to see them out in the schools. So we can't wait until that starts. So that's all for me.
I just, I want to echo all the comments regarding our state representatives and obviously our state senator regarding both the racial imbalance and the twenty percent component that's on recovery for CMS. And for those that haven't heard, it's twenty percent on a hundred and twelve million that we will be getting back, which is something that's phenomenal and never happened before. So that's really, really helpful that that money will be coming back to the town. So that's, that's great, great news. So we should not delay in CMS at all. And I just want to also want to add on the comment of racial imbalance piece. I've also asked our state reps and our senator to start working, since we have this year, to just get rid of the statute in general as opposed to having it just redo it or have us having to start this process again back in July, in July of twenty twenty five. But to figure out a way to just to to get rid of it, it's it's old. It's doesn't need to be on the books anymore. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our, unless anyone had any questions, sorry. Yeah, I was going to go to you next, Laura.
Well, you've already heard about the state reimbursement exciting news, so I'll gloss over that. The distinguished teacher ceremony was Thursday last week and it was a lovely event here. Some of you were in attendance, some of you were not, but it was a great event. Ms. Kowalski, Dr. Jones, Karen, all there.
I have to say, Laura, that was tremendous work that you did with respect to that committee. And I'd have to say that those, the six teachers speeches were some of the most inspirational speeches I have heard in a very long time. And it's truly a, just, it's remarkable that the talent of educators that we have here at Greenwich and it really shined through that night. So thanks for your hard work, Laura, and making sure that that happened.
I can't take credit for planning the ceremony. I can only take credit for being on the committee, but it was really nice. As for Central Middle School, some of you may have tuned in to the hearing with the Tree Warden on Wednesday. That took place at eleven AM. And we will hopefully know his determination on removing the trees that need to be removed, as well as the rock outcropping within days, hopefully by Monday. Last night, if you tuned in to the bitter end, around eleven or so, when Architectural Review took up the CMS design, they passed us and we are on to planning and zoning on May twenty ninth. So that's all I've got.
Laura, I had, I had a question for you, Laura, if that's okay. I understand that I actually sat in on your, on the Building Committee meeting this past Tuesday at eight AM, which by the way, is the witching hour. So that's tremendous that you do it at eight AM when all, everyone has to get to school. But I had a question regarding, I understand- But, um, I, I had a question regarding, I understand that, um, the Chair, Tony Turner, is going to be stepping down and it's a little uncertain as to the timing as to which that would happen and a transition plan and when a new chair would be stepping in place. And I was wondering if you could provide some commentary on that for the board.
So, uh, uh, Chair Turner announced he would be leaving the position on May 1st. Uh, he said he would stay on for more than 30, but less than 60 days. We have hoped, we have tried to get some clarity on, on when exactly, um, we would need to have a new leadership team in place. We have not really been successful on seeking, uh, on receiving any clarity. So I have no news unfortunately to share on, on that front, but we do have very talented members on the committee. Chair Turner intends to stay on as a member, so there won't be any loss of institutional knowledge, for lack of a better term. And the transition would theoretically not be terribly tricky. But we are sort of in limbo.
On that same front, I, you know, I, I know, um, you just mentioned that, uh, Chair Turner had said that he was, uh, stepping down from that position as of May 1st, but within 30 to 60 days from that. So, I mean, I know we're, you know, two weeks into May. But, you know, I, I know with the board having, uh, we have a retreat in two weeks and the net, our last board meeting of the year uh, in a month. So I don't know, you know, if it would be helpful if we did a sense of the meeting or something to ask for that information. I know you guys are meeting coming up soon. Um, just because I assume there's going to be a lot of work by Central Middle School Building Committee over the summer and we may not be meeting. So I don't know if there's any information that they would need, uh, whoever the new individual is.
I, I mean, we have some candidates. I have nominated some candidates. It was too, apparently too soon for nominations. But I know that, um, the sentiment of many of you is that more certainty is better, particularly on a project of this size and importance. I would tend to agree. And I, I don't really know how to expedite this process or that I alone can expedite it myself.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's in all of our best interests. Obviously, this is probably the most important project we are running right now, and I suspect we'll keep meeting over the summer. So I think, um, certainty, knowing that he's no longer going to be the Chair, it's important that the certainty is clear. And so, um, I'd hope that, you know, we could, he would be willing to tell us in the short term, especially because I guess I would be concerned if he were leaving, but now that you tell me that he's staying on the committee, then the transition part isn't so, such a concern. So I would think he'd be comfortable giving us a, a date certain that we could all plan accordingly, right?
He has not. Anybody else?
No, I'll just add, and I've, I said it at the meeting and I've said it before, but, um, I do think a date certain is really, is exceptionally important as well as, uh, the transition plan. To me, I think the best thing that makes sense is to have a new Chair elected by the committee and the transition go forward and they can obviously shadow each other because Mr. Turner's not leaving. And I do think that's important, given that it is our biggest and most expensive capital project, uh, on our agenda. I would not want anything to impact our ability to put a shovel in the ground by the end of this year. Particularly now that we have the blessing of the state and, um, 20% coming back. I think that there should be no impediment to moving forward. And I really do hope that we can just move, the committee can move forward and continuing with its good work and, uh, move along expeditiously.
We are hard at work every, almost every day, but definitely on Tuesdays, um, at 8:00 AM, always a lively meeting. Please feel free to join us as you, as you can.
Laura, do you meet every Tuesday at 8:00 AM?
We sure do.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Any other committee comments such, all right? Perfect. Uh, moving on to the next agenda item. Dr. Jones, the, uh, Western Middle School Soil Update.
Um, I'll just remind the community that we had a full presentation on this just over a month ago. So if you have an interest to go back into that previous, uh, board agenda and you can watch the full presentation, uh, project is going great, um, managing it very, very well. Uh, both of our contractors, it's mainly AECOM who's on site now, but again, uh, everything's still moving forward. Uh, fantastic.
Comments, questions, moving right along? Great. That's always good news. I know that we're excited to get that done. And unfortunately, it won't be done in time for fall sports, but it will be ready for spring sports, which is really important. Um, moving on, we have, um, Dr. Higginthaller and Mr. Baines regarding the pre-K updates.
So good evening, we sub, can you hear me? We submitted a presentation on the update of pre-K, um, looking at the goals within pre-K. Um, the new curriculum that's been implemented this year as well as, um, just some general information about the pre-K programs, the schools that they're at and, that we keep finding these little munchkins and our numbers keep growing in pre-K as do the classes. And we continue to open sections as, um, as we need to with, uh, in order to support the needs for the students. So we're open to questions you guys may have.
Hello. Um, thank you for that update. It really was lovely to, to see what's happening with our youngest learners. So, uh, you know, I just wanted to ask, uh, well, I have two different sets of questions. One is on the new curriculum, because I know this is our first year with that. Um, I think it's wonderful that we're having that opportunity so that all of the preschools uh, are running the same curriculum and these students will be kindergarten ready when they, well, hopefully that's the plan, kindergarten ready when they step out the door. I just didn't know if you've, uh, you know, I know professional development was part of that, that program, and I didn't know if you've surveyed the teachers to see how they felt that professional development went, uh, through the program, if it met their needs. Um, and if they felt that they were able to really get through the meat of the curriculum this year with the students. I know it's a lot to do in a short window of time with individuals who, um, it's like herding cats scatter in every direction, you know, so not as focused always.
Yep. So, yeah, we have, I have started that process of surveying our teachers and how they felt. Um, I just had a, one of my, started the end of year meetings with, um, our groups this week, and I met with, um, the team at Ham Ave, and they, they were talking about how they felt really good about the implementation of creative curriculum. Um, they had opportunities with live training with teaching strategies first in the summer or, or in the spring last year, and then we waited a month or so so that they can get, get their feet on the ground. And then we had teaching strategies come in again. It's been successful to have our instructional coaches go through and do walkthroughs, themed walkthroughs where we're telling them what we're, we're going to look for, and we're going to provide them feedback on specific areas. Um, and that's been helpful as well. And then we've, we've also had monthly team meetings, um, to talk about the creative curriculum. So, uh, we feel like the implementation, the first year implementation has gone really well. Yeah. So, and we'll also be working on the summer curriculum work, which is finding ways to make sure that we're implementing it efficiently with the other curriculums that we're providing to our students, such as foundations, um, and second step. And we're also looking at, um, ways that we're assessing the students to make sure that we're getting the most accurate information moving forward with this new curriculum. Uh, there's so much to unpack. There's so many rich learning experiences within the curriculum, and we want to make sure that we're using it to its entirety.
I, I'd love to be there as a fly on the wall the day you give assessments to preschoolers, just to see how that goes. But, you know, and, and I'd love to see if, you know, or just make a comment that I, I hope that, you know, next year, that this is the first a group of preschoolers, I mean, they've granted had one year of the curriculum, but moving into preschool, uh, from preschool to kindergarten. If we could just, we have the opportunity to follow them to sort of see how that, you know, this new program, if it really gave them the proper tools that met the students' needs to be kindergarten ready. I think that would be very helpful for us to know, um, especially if we, you know, considering, uh, reducing that, uh, you know, academic, uh, cliff that we're, we're always talking about, or, you know.
I agree.
And then one other question for you. Um, you know, I know one of our goals, uh, was to, um, enhance the support for early intervention within preschool. And I didn't, I, I don't remember hearing a lot about that in the presentation. So I was just sort of wondering, um, you know, how we're bringing that, you know, enhancing that support for early intervention in the preschool program. Um, if, if it's part of the new curriculum or if it's something that we're doing in addition. You know, just wanted to make sure we know that how we're meeting the needs of our youngest, uh, students there.
Yeah. So the, the curriculum really dives into what is developmentally appropriate for our youngest learners. So the teachers have a set list of milestones based on the curriculum lessons to where, where our students should be based on, um, what they're, what they're doing in class. So they're able to do that as well. We also have requests for assistance so that we see that, uh, our students are struggling. You know, our teachers could fill out, or families can fill out a request for assistance. And then we can have, um, someone go in and take a look at the student, help provide strategies, um, to, for early intervention, like you said. So, yep.
I, I just have a question of, and see that you're adding one section at COSCOB, and I was curious if you could talk about just, it, it seems like just having one class alone, is that challenging in terms of not having colleagues in the building?
Well, it, there's always, it could be, but you also have your, your related service providers. You have your other special education teachers in the building. Um, and I know the team is really supportive, so, um, you know, you have, you have that aspect as well. Um, you know, we'll, we'll continue to evaluate that as, as we move forward.
And just to, just to add on, we've had to do this in the past with where we start with one class and then in moving forward, sometimes we have to add a second class or we're always looking for space. Um, I think that's one of our most challenging aspects for pre-K, um, is growing. So, um, hopefully there, there would be space at some time, but sometimes we have to have, start with one class. And we're trying to also not overload any one particular school, which is why that particular class is actually coming from North Street over to, uh, COSCOB. So again, we're trying to give parents more options too, so that we're not bussing our, our, our littlest ones. We have three-year-olds who are on buses going all over town, so trying to, to mitigate that as well.
Um, it says in the next school year that you anticipate adding another program, but that location is to be determined. Do you have views on where that might sit given current spatial issues? Or does that to be determined means we need to see how everything else plays out?
Yes. So Dr. Jones and I will start in September, um, looking and, um, at the numbers across the schools because we know we're going to have to open a class. So we start looking at where that could be, um, start talking to principals. We start looking at space, um, because not just any classroom can be used as a preschool, preschool classroom. So those conversations take, um, a lot of time. Um, so we start that discussion at the very early end of the year. Once we know where the classes are, where the sections are, um, and then again, trying to look at where our students are and where their, um, where their, where their homeschool is too.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions? Yep. Sorry, Laura has one.
Um, just wondering, what is, uh, I know that, you know, we changed the, the si, okay, how do I say this correctly? We let the size, um, be somewhat squishy. So are the ratio of, um, IEP students to, um, their typical peers. So I'm just wondering, are we, um, are we expecting uniformity among class sizes? Are some classes smaller, some classes larger? I just wondered what, um, what we're sort of targeting as far as an ideal class size for the pre-K.
So our, our goal is still nine typical students and six special education students. The squishiness comes at this point in the year because we still have students, because students, as soon as they turn three, come into the program. And so, um, you know, we have students turning three like right now with four weeks left of school. So it is a little bit squishy right now. Um, and it is a good word, Laura. And so we do have in our, in our classes and, um, the 15, uh, classes that we've had that have run all year do have a seventh special education student and our newer class that we just opened, uh, mid-year has six. I think we have some openings in some of the typical peers, so they're not all have nine.
We have nine classes with nine typical peers right now, and then four classes with eight.
That helps. Thank you.
And just one last question. Um, with regards to the projected growth, do you feel that we've, that you're sufficiently budgeted for the right staffing, uh, for all of the incoming classes and expected classes and how you would juggle that?
I think we're appropriately budgeted based on the historic trends. I think what we're going to have to see is in September with the whole kindergarten age thing, where we actually fall. So if we've been monitoring and asking our parents, you know, are you staying in preschool or going to kindergarten? And we're pretty firm on most of those. But that doesn't mean we're not going to have parents who might change their mind this summer or, uh, new students who move in who decide to, you know, they want the preschool. So based on all things being kind of equal and stable from our historic trends, we're good, but we're still going to have to monitor that.
And, uh, you just prompted another question, which is what is, what do you think the general trend is for parents in that they're, because of that age differential by when you can enter kindergarten? Do you view that the parents are making it, is the decision greater to keep them in preschool for another year or is it to go ahead and just send them to kindergarten?
So I can answer that. We had, this year, we had 129 families that fell into that range where they, they had to make that decision. Um, 83 gen ed and 43 sped families, and we actually had a even split. There's 30, 30 students that are staying with us in preschool and 15 are special education, 15 are gen ed. So more, most of the families chose to go to kindergarten, but we still had a quite, you know, a nice amount that stayed in preschool.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, perfect. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. Um, all right. Thank you. And now we have, um, the CAC report. We have Jen and, Jenny and Audra.
Sorry, hold on. I told you I'm operating on very little sleep tonight. I apologize. Okay, that was a test run. You guys did great. Good job. Proud of you. All right. So actually, what I really want to have come up is Mr. D'Amico and Ms. Newell, which I wouldn't want to miss for on the Hamilton Avenue String Program. So, sorry, guys.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Jones. Uh, my remarks tonight are a little bit bittersweet. Um, the sweet part certainly was listening to the wonderful musicianship that kicked off our evening. But that doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of fine leadership. And standing next to me, I'm proud to, uh, turn the podium over to Ms. Laura Newell. But it's bittersweet because this is the last time I'm going to turn the podium over to Ms. Laura Newell. So publicly, I'd like to thank her for her years of service with the Greenwich Public Schools. And, uh, to that end, uh, maybe have her tenure here end with, um, some easy questions this evening.
That's, that's one introduction. Thanks, Mark.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share a little bit about our special program over at Hamilton Avenue School. Hope you had the chance to, uh, take a look at the video, uh, that our team put together. But this magic actually really doesn't happen without the teachers. And I think it's really important that you get to meet each one of them. I'm going to first call up Lisa Wolf, who is one of our orchestra teachers at Hamilton Avenue. We have Dr. Daniel Holtmark, who is our Suzuki Director at Hamilton Avenue School. We have Gillian We have Gillian Corey, who is our Western Middle School Orchestra Director. We have Bethany Foscaldo, who is, who you met earlier. She is our orchestra director at GHS. And we have Megan Debona, who is our learning facilitator for the string program. So she's the teacher leader for the string program K through 12. She has such an important role as she helps plan PD for the staff. She helps collect data and revise assessments and curriculum work. So I thought it was really important to recognize these folks because it really takes a village to do some special things in the music department. So if you could, let's recognize them for their outstanding work. And with that, I'm going to open the floor for any questions that you might have regarding the presentation.
Any questions?
Karen? I don't have a question. I simply have a comment. And especially as I know this may be, this probably will be the last time you're standing in front of us. I just wanted to say thank you. And I, I'm not, I can probably speak for the board. I know Karen and I have had a continued focus for many, many years on ensuring our students have the opportunity to have an incredible education in the arts, as well as just academics. And arts is academics in many ways. And I have seen the incredible things that you have done within our schools and woken the spirit up within our, many of our students have heard from countless students over the years. I remember at one point we talked about music. It's some, for some students, that's the one reason they get up in the morning and go to school. That's their safe space. That's the thing that makes them want to be at school. And so to see the students, the age range and the fact that we are introducing students to the Suzuki program in kindergarten and first grade, and they're continuing all the way through high school and beyond is absolutely fantastic. And I just wanted to thank you for sharing that with us as a community and a board and for all of the other incredible things that you've done and the focuses that you've had on the arts and what you've brought into our schools and our district for so many years. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, Greenwich is a very, very special place. It's a very special place because of programs that you guys support. You guys really make it a safe space for people who, like Karen said, may not want to come to school until they have that, that touch point with that arts teacher, that art teacher, or that music teacher. I really hope to see that continue. And I hope to be in the audience after, you know, my time is completed here. But thank you so much for the tremendous support you've had for the program over the years. And I'm going to finish with a snippet of one of our proudest moments in the district, the String Festival finale. And our co-director for the String Festival is here, actually. Gillian Corey is one of our directors and Aaron, Aaron LaFaro, who happened to be a distinguished teacher last year, is the other co-director. I hope that this also speaks to you as to why these programs are just so super important for building the music community in Greenwich.
So, oh, good.
It's on the screen behind you. The suspense is what builds all the imagination. Actually, if Mike is on board, I believe there is another copy that I can share if you don't have it. There should be another copy that says Board of Ed five sixteen. Maybe that one will be better.
You want moment to pull it up?
Thank you. We usually have a backup. Just in case. And if for some reason you can't find it, Mike, I can certainly share it with the board. That's not a problem. And even post it to our website for the community to take a look.
While we're waiting, I just wanted to make a comment about the video. I really appreciated so much the older kids talking about how they learned about collaboration and teamwork from music, because I think that's something that we don't often talk about. And there's, I love that we're a sports town, but we are a sports town. And music is also a really great way to learn how to work with other people.
Yeah, I actually think you're a string now. The other S. Yeah, it was really nice to have some of our alumni come out and talk about how music has really touched their lives, even though they're not continuing as professional musicians. And I can speak for everyone here that that's kind of like our main goal is exposing them to music at an early age so that they will sing to their children, whether they think they sing beautifully or not, that they will give the similar opportunities to their children or to their community, and then give back to the community. What you saw up there on the String Festival, that was a community. And the Suzuki program in itself, just the philosophy and the pedagogy talks about music being a community and the way that it's designed in that, in that you could see even before the meeting had started, we had the littlest players playing with the older kids. And it's scaffolded so that they all have a part and they all have an important part to make it all work together. So I'm assuming Mike can't find the other video.
If not, maybe we can at least post it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I found one. Room one, Laura?
Okay, great. Yes. Play it. Let's see.
Hi, I'm Joe and I'm an engineer in Boston. Last year, I graduated from the University of Pennsylvania. I was a salutatorian of the GHS class of twenty nineteen. And I graduated from HAMAV and all the way back in twenty eleven. I was forced violinist at other non-musical benefits too, especially in the areas of discipline and focus. And if you want to get good at anything, it's just as Dr. Suzuki says, which is practice, practice, practice. And I always like to imagine a world in which everyone could play music. And I think HAMAV is a great testament to how that can be possible.
And over the course of my elementary school experience, I think both my talent and love for the instrument grew rapidly. And I think these early experiences from childhood started the foundation I had with confidence and poise, which later translated into being able to find ease in performing solos later on in middle school and high school, or playing in orchestral auditions or playing in me personally, my involvement in music didn't stop either after high school. I continue to play the viola while studying at Boston College and their orchestra and chamber ensembles. And although I'm not continuing music professionally now, I can see how studying music and playing the violin have several parallels to my chosen career path in dental school every day with finger and hand dexterity and posture and persistence and practice. I find music to still be very relevant to my life today. And I know that my life would be very different had I never started playing violin in elementary school.
Hello, my name is Charles Andrew Miranda, and I'm an alum of the Greenwich Public Schools District. I'm making this video today to express my gratitude and to thank those who supported the Suzuki program at my elementary school HAMAV. Growing up in a low income household, I didn't have the opportunities to explore many extracurricular activities. However, thanks to HAMAV Suzuki program, I was exposed to music at an early age, having weekly lessons both in the classroom and outside the classroom due to HAMAV's partnership with the Greenwich Alliance. I'm also inspired by HAMAV Suzuki program at high school, where I served as a private lesson teacher for eight elementary and middle school students. I've also decided to take this passion with me to my first year at the University of Pennsylvania, where I volunteer at local West Philly elementary schools, supporting strings teachers in their classrooms. I'm so grateful for the opportunities that the Greenwich Public School District has provided me, and I'm excited to give back in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. You will be missed. Okay, now we're ready for the real thing.
Do you have our slides? I was at the Strings Festival and it was amazing. So thank you. I'm Jenny Reynolds and this is Audra Donovan, and we're the Chair and Vice Chair of CAC this year. And we're very happy to be here tonight. Thank you for having us to provide a report. Next slide. Just as a reminder of CX missions, we're looking to educate and inform, promote understanding and respect around neurodiversity, advise and ensure equity for our special education students and monitor and report as we're doing tonight. What we typically report on is what our committees do each year. And this year, we chose two working committees as a council, staffing and inclusion. So Audra's going to talk to you about staffing.
So our committees are made up of parents, staff and administrators. So for our staffing committee, we chose the CAC chose this topic to work together on because it came up in every single committee we've ever had. It can, we have the GEA speaking about it, PTAC speaking about it. So we thought it was important and we needed to focus on it. The committee decided on six topics to focus on every single meeting we had, we chose one of those topics. So the first one was the refinement of the staffing model. What we learned while we were on the committee is that everyone has a different idea of how we staff. We've had presentations on it and the staff still doesn't know. Some buildings do it some way, some buildings do the other way. Now, it, it does. We are told that it's done by caseload, but as you heard, the GEA said it's so much more important than just a caseload of a student. We have to look at their indirect hours, their direct hours. Some students have all different classifications and different needs. Some students have crises every week. We have our psychologists, our social workers being pulled from therapy of other students to service these kids, and those indirect hours are not counted. So we don't know if that data is being collected at every building. Some our staff, our committee was made up of teachers throughout the district, parents throughout the district. So some staff said, oh, no, I keep track of that. And I, and I do hand it to the assistant principal. Some buildings said it's not. We really need our staffing models to look at direct services as well as indirect services. Also, we had staff at different levels. So we had elementary school, middle school and high school who would share that the staff is different. We understand it's different. You get probably more intervention in the lower levels, but they, again, did not know where the data was coming from that shows our staffing model and how it was being fully implemented. It's not clear to any of the staff that was in our committee of how the indirect and the direct services and the level our need of need of each student is being considered in the staffing model. We do believe the data is being tracked in each building so that we're not saying we don't have the data. We're just asking if that data can be used when we're staffing our buildings. So the special education report did say that each child is, every caseload is, there is a cap on what the special ed teachers can get per caseload. Though, again, it's not the indirect services that are counted. We don't know if the CO Talk classrooms, are they getting the same caseload as someone without a caseload? I'm obviously a little nervous now. So now I'm, I'm used to just talking to everybody.
You're doing great.
Doing just fine.
We're also discussing when the students are being pulled out of the classroom. So some staff report that when they're doing their planning, their meeting is captured in the IEP and they're advised they have to plan for our most intensive class students. They're not getting that time that's in the IEP. At least half of our staff that were in our committee shared that they are not meeting the IEP required and mandated hours and services for each child that they service.
So can I stop you there and just ask a question on that point?
Sure.
So if they're, it's, so they're, they're being those staff that should, that are, that are scheduled to be providing services as required by the IEP, they're being pulled out to do what other things?
If there's a crisis in the building, so just say the social worker, the psychologist is in a PPT. So they're being pulled out from intervention, you know, or if a parent comes in and they need a team meeting. Like there's stuff that comes up every day. Or if they're having an assembly and one of the assemblies are planned, you know, just randomly, if that, if one of our children required to have a psychologist, a power or somebody with them at that time, they have to pull from someplace else.
So is it a has CAC talked about how to rectify, like?
We, we do have many recommend, one of our recommendations is, is that you hear about, we have paras, we have building subs. Special education does not. So if we have just say a speech therapist, that someone, a family member is sick and she's out for a week or two, those students should not get the service for a week or two. We don't have another speech therapist in the building. We do not have a fluid or speech therapist that's in the district that can service those. If the special ed teacher just say broke her leg and she is not coming, you know, we, and again, we're staffing is limited. We're, you know, that's hard to hire them. We do not have any substitutes for special education. Every building had a, has a general ed teacher substitute. They have other people who can be plugged in when there's a crisis or when they need. Special education does not have that.
Are you aware of any other districts that do have floaters going around for special ed? And I mean,
I, I do. I don't know.
I'm just curious.
Yes, I don't know if they're called floaters or if they're called, they have them that.
I'm using the term floater, but I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Thing to know.
I don't know. So, but also when we're saying, when we have an assembly, when we have, we know we have these team meetings, when we have other people who are, there's some special ed teachers who went on maternity leave. They were out of the building for six months. That school did not have a replacement. We were asking to be proactive. We know when things are coming up. We know our population deals with change and especially schedule changes and new people very, it's very difficult on our children. We're asking to be very proactive in the way. It seems we, we feel the committee, not Jenny and I, that we're, we're working under reactive. This happened, let's throw them in. We have one in here, you'll see, we have a power who said she did 20,000 steps in a day because something was going on. She was running around the building. We also have staff that are moving from the building. So during the year, some staff just moved from maybe the high school to an elementary school because the elementary school needed them and we're understaffed. So we really have to see what is prompting that. And no one knows. We're on our committee, they said they don't know why. They just, we don't have a power in this building anymore. Other buildings received a power. So absenteeism is a big thing. We do know it's a school policy to inform the parents when their staff is not there. Parents have repeatedly stated they do not know. Their child didn't get services for two to three weeks. And it was closet legitimate accident. Maybe somebody was out, they were sick, the parent did not know the staff was not in the building. And again, we're saying this, we know it's a policy for Greenwich Public Schools. So we're not saying that it's not in the, it's just not being followed. Our second committee, our second meeting discussed co-teaching. So we are bringing co-teaching into the district. It wasn't very prominent a few years ago. It's great. It's great that we're having it. Everybody in our subcommittee did not, they were not clear on what is co-teaching. They didn't know how they could implement it. Some thought it was for children who had attention issues. Some thought it was to have a seamless co-taught classroom where you wouldn't know who the teacher and who isn't. Every building had a different description of what they're supposed to do in the co-teaching class. It was a different delivery and the different, we, as parents, we were asking, what would be the benefit? Not every teacher could explain to us what would be the benefit for our children. So we don't know how the rollout is going to be effective if the people who are doing co-teaching can't even explain it to the parents. They want to do it, but they're not sure what they're doing. They also didn't know what the caseload is. Some code, some teachers who were doing caseload had smaller caseloads. Other people who are co-teachers had larger caseloads. Para professionals, this is the big one that the parents and our staff that were in it spoke about. If a child needs a para professional, it's, the committee at the PPT discusses it. They make a joint decision. No one knows really how that, some teachers have said this child needs a para, it was denied. Now, I think they're, they shared, there was a seven-page document they had to fill out, then to recommend a para. That's new. Teachers don't know why they have to do that. Some of them do invest the time to do that, and still, at the end of the day, after the teacher says that they need it, it's still denied. Our paras have expressed that. The sport, the support is made available from whoever is free in the building, and they're asked to help other children, other students, just when they're on break. So again, one of the paras who said 20,000 steps, she was running around to serve anyone who's free. Again, I go back to our, our population deals with change and new peoples, it's so difficult on their central system. So when you're just throwing people in to fill a break, it's not going to end well. You are going to have behaviors, we see it every day in the buildings. And then the behavior is blamed on the student. When, again, we are just proactive to address this beforehand, we might not have had those behaviors. And again, when we're talking about the mandated services, if we are pulling staff to service the other students, they're not where their mandated services there should be.
On that point where students are not being serviced, is anyone keeping track of that within the schools?
We have been told that they've been keeping track of that. When parents ask for it, they're not provided it. Sometimes they're told they are getting them, you know, they might have missed one or two. So I do believe, we hope, I think every related service provider and every teacher in the building is keeping track of what they're doing. Is that being shared with the administrators and the parents at this time? No.
Should we wait for the end to ask questions?
Okay. We, actually, when we were hearing about the music and our great music program, they said there's a learning facilitator, Mr. Bona, who was at North My Ass when my children were there and learned under her. And she keeps track of, you know, the professional development, and she keeps track of all the data. So I don't, I don't think special ed has a learning facilitator who keeps track of the data or a special ed professional development. So maybe how we're saying, we want to be proactive and we want to make sure that all this is going on. Maybe that would be great to have someone, a learning facility for special education. The other thing is our related service providers, we don't know how they're being tracked. The psychologists, the BCBA's, the speech therapists, the mental health staff, especially our mental health staff. Especially, you know, it's starting, we're seeing our children struggle in elementary school, not just middle school and high school. And our psychologists and social workers are being called out of meetings all the time, being called out of intervention. We want to make sure that is being tracked, those indirect hours, and those children, that data is being kept, so we know how many hours they're actually servicing children and not just the IEP hours. Because our staff is above and beyond servicing our children. We hear it every day, and we appreciate when you, our teachers who were nominated for the distinguished teacher award, we do have great staff, but the prominent thing we heard through all our committees is they lost hope. Like, I've been doing this for 10 years. I've never seen so many teachers upset and crying, saying they lost hope. They don't know if they can do it. And in this committee, that was, that was pervasive with everybody that came. I love our children, I love our, our community, but I'm not sure if I can stay. So we really, again, have to be proactive to hear our teachers, work with our teachers. Sorry, that was our para professional, then. So again, we went over the building subs. We don't have a building subs to our sister teachers. The professional assistant service time is sometimes included in the service page, sometimes not. Again, we want data to make sure every service hour that our staff is working with our children. The powers in team collaboration, a lot of times our powers are with our most intensive and most needy of students. A lot of times they're not included in the PPT meetings. They are not, they're, I think they are, they read the IP's. We want them to have specialized training for the children that they're working with. A lot of behavior training. We did ask for behavior training, training last year for the CAC, and I do believe they gave behavior training to the special ed teachers and some of the paras, but then the general ed teachers, as Jenny's going to go into inclusion, like, we're all in one. Like, we need to all work together. So our general ed teachers also need this behavior training. They need to know how to work with all of the students. So we can't just have that professional training and development just for special ed students. I mean, special ed teachers. The resources for the staff well-being and staff climate across the district. I mean, that's, that is really what we got out of the staffing committee, is we have to work with our teachers, we have to hear our teachers. I mean, they're, again, I've never, I've been doing this for 10 years now, and I, I really appreciate, I have three kids with IP's, 504s, and, shockingly, but I've spoken here many times before, and I've never, ever felt that I don't know where we're going because our teachers are just overwhelmed. They're, we have on paper saying it's the lowest caseload they've ever had. Every single teacher in our committee said it is one of the highest, the highest number of students they are servicing, and they've never had this many hours. I don't know where the disconnect is, but we can't just say that's not true. There is a disconnect, and we have to find out where it is because we are going to lose our teachers. They, I mean, they are just burnt out. Their morale is gone, they don't feel heard. I know we have some committees, and I know our teachers have volunteered. I mean, we had 26 that came to almost every meeting. So 26 parents and teachers, that's a lot of time to dedicate to read this report, to help us write this report. They are dedicated, but they're not feeling heard. We, they say they volunteer to be on committees, but then at the end of the day, any of their comments, they don't feel are heard. They don't feel any of the recommendations, any of the input that they shared was followed up with. Now, there might be reasons for that, but there's no communication to share. There is no, they feel that there is no appreciation to say, this was really great, we can't do that now, but this is what we're going to do. They just, a lot of them shared they felt it was a waste of time going to these committees because their voices were not heard. Again, when we, when we have meetings with district staff, they do tell us, we have the, our staff is the professionals, and we should be listening to their opinion. So I do believe that the district wants that, but it just, it's the, the outplay, it's just not happening. So again, we have to find out where this disconnect is before it gets worse. We need all the stakeholders to be at the table. And again, what we keep hearing that there's public praise for our teachers, but they don't feel it. We really need the communication to step up and to include them in it. I don't know if we give them anonymous outlets. I don't know when the recommendations, when we're having these committees and you're making those decisions, please provide data to everybody, the parents, the staff, that are on those committees, about why their voice wasn't heard. And budget, I mean, we talk about budget all the time, like, we know we, you know. Again, it was a great year compared to others, but we're, we are sped staff, our sped numbers are going up. We need our sped staff to go up with it. We, again, the substitutes, the paras, that, that, we talked about the pre-K. Now we're, another idea was to have building subs, and also if we could have a different, a new, a para that's going into the kindergarten building. So, and we want them to evaluate the cost-effectiveness of it. We can't just say we want more money. Like, evaluate, evaluate the unique learner program. Are we using that? Like, I think there was one to three students. Are we gaining more students in that program? Or are we putting resources there where they can be better used in another part of our district? We really need to know the effectiveness of the program and the cost-effectiveness and staff development. And staff development was what students, I mean, the staff talked about all the time. Please include them in staff development. Sometimes they're sent to mandatory staff development where they've done that training before. Our staff go outside and do training additionally for themselves. Then they have to come back and do another mandatory staff development. Please make sure that our staff is included in it, and it's a better model for implementation. Maybe we just look at the home, the home model. Also, they had a learning facilitator. Maybe the learning facilitator could work with the PD for our special education staff. We need behavior training for all. I mean, we can look at the numbers for the crisis intervention. It's not just special ed, it's general ed students. When our special ed students aren't serviced, it affects everybody in the building. We were asked to only keep it to two recommendations, so that's what we're trying to do. We just want to give information of everybody that everyone shared in our committee. So our first recommendation is to create a clear and consistent staffing model for all special ed staff, our teachers, related service providers, para professionals, our BCBA's, our mental health staff. Students focused, looking at individual needs, service hours, and planning time required. They cannot implement something if they do not have the planning time to do it. When our staff is stressed, our students are stressed. It relates back to our special ed kids. Our kids are never going to make progress if our staff are not there and present to assist them. Inform through data collection, we need to use the data to do it. Track indirect service hours, create a rubric for buildings to easily access staff need. Consider floating staff for district to cover mid-year additions and absences. And our second is to involve staff meaningfully. Create transparency around staffing decisions. Include special ed staff on district-wide committees and take action on committee input. Share those surveys results, be transparent, conduct exit interviews, and cultivate a culture of respect. It's, this is the first time I can honestly say it's not us versus them. When I first started in this, it was the parent, the parents would not want to talk to the staff. The parents would not want to work with the staff. We're not there. Like, we are one team, and I appreciate every administrator, every staff member who came to our subcommittee. We still have a long way to go, but we are on the team together where we want you at the table with us and to work through this because we do have a great staff and we want to keep them.
Do you want us to ask questions about staffing, you know, that part of your report now or wait till the very end?
I think we can do it after the inclusion because I think, again, it's all connected.
Can you move forward two slides, please? So the second committee, working committee, was the Inclusion Committee, which I was one of the chairs of. And we started our conversation in the committee by just realizing that there was a big discrepancy in how people defined inclusion throughout the district. So we sought experts in the field, leading researchers and teachers of inclusion, and, and looked for defining it for you and for this report. And so for our committee, we defined it as inclusion is an approach that extends beyond just access to physical spaces or curricular content. It's a responsive and flexible approach that fosters a sense of belonging, respect, and acceptance through shared ownership between general education and special education teachers. This chart is by Shelley Moore, who's kind of the queen of UDL, Universal Design for Learning, and this is from one of her books. And I think it's a really good diagram to just highlight the different variations of classrooms that you might see or even schools. So exclusion and segregation are pretty clear in these pictures. The first four, the green dots are representing the non-IEP kids, and the colorful dots, the other colored dots are representing our various neurodiverse learners. And I just want to highlight, because I'm going to kind of call back to it, the integration one, which is right there in the middle. All of, if you look at that, all the students are in the same classroom, but the, the neurodiverse learners, our kids with IP's are kind of clumped together within that. We're seeing this as a model of inclusion in this district a lot. We're seeing it in co-taught classrooms where the, the kids are grouped by ability and even by teacher in some cases. And we're seeing it in gen ed classrooms where their gen ed teacher is teaching primarily to the green students and the others are getting, you know, a lesson over to the side, either with their para professional or working on modified content. So that's just something that does happen. It's not all across the board, but that's, that's one thing that we were seeing. And then in the past, Shelley Moore and other inclusion specialists kind of stopped at that fourth one, inclusion, where, you know, they're all in the same room together and they're, they're, they're working together. And she changed it in 2016 because as the more work that she did with UDL, the more she realized that the idea, whole idea of universal design for learning is having access points for all learners. And our non-IEP students are not all the same learning profile, just like our IEP students are not all the same learning profile. So it's really important to consider that there's variety. And when you use something like universal design for learning, where you create a foundation and you build upon that foundation for each learner, then you're teaching to diversity, you're teaching to all kids, and each kid excels even more. Next slide, please. We looked at the research, and there's 40 years of research that is overwhelmingly supportive of inclusive education. The benefits for kids with disabilities are improved academic achievement, better communication skills, wider social networks, fewer behavior problems, higher graduation rates, and improved options after high school. Benefits for kids without disabilities are increased creativity, communication, innovation, collaboration, empathy, and patience. All things that, if I were an employer, I might be looking for. And on top of that, there's lots of evidence of recorded higher academic achievement for the kids without IP's. These two graphs we included because we felt like they were a really good representation of what can happen in a district when you really commit to inclusive teaching practices. So the one on the left is from a district in Oregon that really embraced inclusion. And over a five-year period, you can see that yellow line is the percentage of IEP students that are in the classroom more than 80%, which is kind of the gold standard in research, is that for it to be called inclusion, they're in the classroom, the general education classroom at least 80% of the day. So that yellow line is the increase from 60% of students with IP's were included 80% or more of the day, and it went up in five years to 88% of them were in the classroom 80% or more of the day. And you can see that their graduation rates, the orange represents their special ed students. They, the graduation rates in five years went from 60% graduation rate to 81.5. And for all students, it went up 4.5%. So, so it's pretty telling that that approach is very successful. And then on the chart on the right is from Inclusive Schooling, which is a consulting group and educating group on inclusive education. And they did a consultation and kept data themselves on an elementary school in the Midwest. And this was just reading data after three years of inclusive classrooms, 80% or more in a general education environment. And this is really telling. The, the reading test scores for the special education students went from 13% proficient or advanced to 60% proficient or advanced in just three years. And the percentage of all students went from 50% proficient or advanced to 86%. Next slide. And then we asked, what does the law say? And I'm not going to educate you a ton on IDA because I assume that you all know, but the IDA is very clear that students are to be educated in the least restricted, least restrictive environment. And that means that they, students with disabilities are in regular classrooms with non-disabled peers in their neighborhood schools to the maximum, maximum extent possible. Removal can only occur if education in regular classes with the use of supplementary aids and services with fidelity cannot be achieved. Next slide. So in our inclusion committee, we had four areas of focus. Our first area of focus was just a lack of consensus of definition, which I already kind of alluded to, and a lack of guidance on inclusion. So there's no real shared language. Some people are using the words mainstream and inclusion interchangeably. Mainstream is really kind of the first foray into inclusion back in the 1980s when students had to earn their right into the general education classroom as opposed to inclusion, which it is their right to be in the general education classroom. There's a lot of interchangeability between collab, co-teach, UDL, modification, accommodation, differentiation. And there's just not a clear, shared definition of these things. No clear stance or guidance for staff or publicly on the website. And our question was, with so much, so much that is unclear in the mere understanding of inclusion, how can we determine if practices are effective or if the least restrictive environment is even being properly assessed? Our second area of focus is just established systems and mindsets regarding placements of students with disabilities. We recognize that there are We recognize that there are longstanding issues in just public education as a whole, nothing to do with Greenwich. Kids with, some kids with disabilities like 40 or 50 years ago wouldn't have even been going to school. So, so the system has changed. And when IEPs were first developed, they were developed without inclusive practices on the table. So the whole system of IEPs and, and even really special education was developed at a time when segregation was the norm. So that kind of medical model of looking at remediating kids as opposed to fixing environments, it still exists. And so that's, that's something that we're up against. Hurdles that we see particularly in the district are things such as lack of consistency of practices across schools and school levels, mindsets in general around inclusive practices, inclusion being placed under the Office of Special Education and Student Supports rather than general education, or at least a collaboration between the two, and lack of planning and shared learning between special ed and gen ed staff. And last, rostering. We noticed a lot of times that inadvertently or intentionally, we're not sure, but there's a lot of clustering of students of high needs together, which makes for a harder classroom to teach and less diversity within the classroom. Our third area of focus was looking at training and, and collaboration. So this is kind of something that Audra talked about and we hear time and time again in our committees is that we've, that a lot of staff feel like there's a lot of training and it gets watered down because there's not a lot of follow-up. And so it starts to all kind of blend together and none of it gets implemented in the classroom. So if you're looking at something like UDL, a district-wide rollout, continuing to work on that with coaching and looking at small groups and real case problem solving is what teachers are crying out for. They also said that often gen ed and special ed teachers are siloed in their meetings, in their professional development. And, and they, they think that there could be benefit for learning each other's domains, especially if you're teaching classrooms together. Paraprofessionals and related service providers also need training in inclusive practices. We have just as, we're primarily reporting to you the things that we can see that could use help. But we do want to just acknowledge that we're getting good feedback on the Pine Program in the elementary schools. But some people do say that they wish they had more time to explore it. And some people say they didn't know some of the great benefits that are available there. So we hope that that becomes more clear. And another thing that kept coming up as a positive was the addition of an inclusion facilitator in the district. But I just want to highlight on behalf of the district that there's one person doing this role. And our district has 8,600 students and over 1,200 with IEPs. So that makes it pretty hard to implement inclusion efficiently. And then the last area was implementation. And we just kept hearing in our committee, the implementation is really varied. And partly probably because the understanding of what inclusion is, is really varied in the district. So it becomes confusing on what, what it should look like. So a lot of people in the district already think we do inclusion, despite the fact that we use, we heavily use resource rooms. We have a lot of skills classrooms. We have imbalanced co-taught classrooms and a lot of related service pullouts. So are we doing inclusion or are we not doing inclusion? And the, the misperceptions about the effectiveness of inclusion by both parents and staff are, are, could easily be based on a lack of clarity and a wide variety of implementation rather than the actual approach. So looking at implementation is really important. The areas that we found were problems in consistency with implementation is that general education teachers don't always have a strong knowledge of students' disabilities or their IEPs. Special educators are lacking knowledge in curricular content. There is a lack of consistent high expectations for special ed students, particularly in gen ed classrooms. There's a lack of natural proportions, meaning that the percentage of students with disabilities in a classroom should, should kind of flow with the natural proportions of disabilities in the community. So, you know, the, the disabilities within the community is 15 to 20%. And our, our classrooms have much higher percentages of students with disabilities. The research that we talked about that was so overwhelming is based on natural proportions. And we also saw that there was a lack of time to connect with paras. So Audra talked about how paras don't always get included or very rarely get included in team meetings or PPT meetings. We're also hearing that paras are not even getting time, FaceTime with the sped case managers. So they're just pretty much, you know, flying and hoping and getting support when there's crisis. And they're doing an amazing job, but they need support and they need training and they need time to connect with their sped case managers. And, and we're also seeing an overreliance on paras that sometimes spills into an instructional role. In general education, inclusive classrooms or the attempted inclusive classrooms in the district, we see that UDL is more often being used when there's a kid in need rather than as a foundational approach for lesson planning. This often results in different tracks of teaching. So there's kind of the teacher that's teaching to the, the whole. And then there's a kid doing a little bit of a modified work to the side. There's little to no sped push-in in secondary while it's common in elementary. So those kids that have success in elementary with that no longer get that option in secondary. With our co-taught classrooms, we also see a lot of variations, no clear guidelines on when schools can do this. There's issues seen when, where the work and the kids are split by discipline. So like I said, in that integration model and the, and those dot charts, that's happening a lot in our co-taught classrooms, particularly in secondary. The best practices in co-teaching, according to the research and the leading inclusion leaders that are, are teaching and doing research in, in this approach. So that the best practices are centered around collaborative lesson planning and shared seamless teaching. Small groups can be utilized, but not always on ability. Or should not always be based on ability in, in this ideal environment and there should be natural proportions. Greenwich proportions in these classrooms is still very high. And even more so when you consider that a lot of the non-IEP kids that are put in the co-taught classrooms are often kind of on the cusp of having high needs, which is not really the intention of what a co-taught classroom is. And across the board, we keep hearing that there's not a lot of time for special ed and gen ed to collaborate and plan for these lessons. So, next slide.
So Jenny, do you have, I really, you're almost up to an hour here.
Oh, gosh. Okay. I'm almost done. I have two more recommendations. I have just the recommendations.
So yeah, could we jump to the recommendations?
Yeah, we're there now.
If anyone has any questions, I appreciate it.
Okay. So, so our recommendations are to provide direction through unifying message and definitive stance. That's going to help change mindsets. It's going to help provide clarity. It's going to give a roadmap and educate the public. So we have lots of examples of how to do that in our report. And, and this will just help establish a good, clear foundation and vision. Our second recommendation, which is on the next slide, is to establish clear protocols for implementation and consistency. This includes collaborative planning and essentializing curriculum, training and coaching, looking carefully at rostering and using flexible and responsive models. It shouldn't just be one model. Our kids are different and they need to be, have given a variety. So general education with and without sped push-in, co-teaching, especially the co-teaching that's coming up in COSCOB has gotten a lot of good feedback. And, and then using UDL as the foundational aspect, you know, kind of thinking about making a salad. You want to start the lesson plan with the lettuce and then you add in for each student from there. Okay, next slide. Our, one of our standing committee is the enrichment committee. We had a great presentation in the fall with Dan and Samuel Habib, who had recently, I think in that week before they presented to us, had just won an Emmy award for their documentary about Samuel's transition into adulthood and, and his preparation for adulthood. And they, they gave a really great presentation. We also screened one of Dan's earlier documentaries, including Samuel, to kind of see Samuel in his young life and then into his older, older years.
Jenny, this is part of the second recommendation that you had. You said you do want you to.
We did. I did them both. I did them.
So, perfect. Can we, we just need to, we have a long list of other things. I just need to wrap up.
Perfect.
So, does anyone have any questions? Laura?
I just have one. You know, the staffing part is concerning to me. You know, obviously there are no substitutes for special ed students when they have a provider that is absent. You know, and I, I wish that we did have the ability to have building subs who could, who could be there so that children don't miss instructional time. So that's one very important part of the, the piece for helping our special education learners really realize their potential. So I just, I really want to thank you for highlighting that particular issue. My other remark or question really is, was there, have you found a change to how paras are being deployed? And maybe this is a question for Dr. H, but, you know, something about the seven-page report. And, and I just wonder was, is there a change in how we're deploying paras to the buildings? And, and are they now being utilized only for one-to-one? Or are they, are they fulfilling roles of, that we've traditionally thought of them? Like if child's working on their goals, are they working with that child to help them achieve their goals and documenting whether they are making them or not? So I, I just, I have that glaring question.
Yeah, I think I, I can let Dr. H talk, but what we hear in the committee is that CTSEDS, which is the new IEP system, kind of changed where paras go. So in the IEP Direct, it used to be on the service grid and there were specific hours. And in CTSEDS, there isn't that, that placement of putting specific hours. But we were hearing that they were being directed, buildings were being directed to only put it in the IEP if it was a one-on-one. And so that led to a lot of buildings losing paras that had been providing shared support. So I think that has been changed recently and they're starting to put into IEPs now the shared support. So, so we hope that that will increase. But the problem was, is that none of, all the kids that needed partial, part-time paras weren't getting them this year. And that created a real problem.
So buildings do have a combination of one-to-ones and shared. But as Jenny shared, when the system switched, there wasn't a place to put it. And we've finally been able to like figure out where, where we can do it. Where one-to-ones are delineated in one spot, shared paras are delineated in a second spot. And it actually indirect services are then able to, for services for paras or teachers are in another. So part of this has been a switch in systems and where things are documented. We're working on it. It's not the easiest system to use.
I had somebody ask me, why are the paras disappearing? And I'm like, I don't know. So I just didn't know if there was some kind of change in how we're deploying them. So now I'm clear, I think. Thank you.
In the interest of time, I have a bunch of questions and comments, which I know we have already scheduled time. Well, we're looking to schedule a time to sit down so I can share this with you. But I, before I say anything, I just, as one of the board liaisons to CAC, I wanted to thank you and the entire CAC committee and members for all of the hard work, the time, the effort that you guys have put in throughout this year and the years prior. You know, it is really important for us to see from a parent perspective, from an educator perspective, the fact that everybody's working together to share some of this feedback with us on how things are working within the schools, within the program and what needs there are that are still not being met and, and areas that we are actually doing well and so forth. You know, I know we've talked about staffing formulas for what feels like a millennium. And I agree, I know that's a, an area where there's always been questions. And I wanted to thank you, most importantly, for bringing up the issue with paras. You know, I, I think that's something certainly that we should take a deeper dive into looking to who can come in and who can't. I don't know what the rules are, if there's HIPAA violations or what there might be. Maybe it's not HIPAA, but sharing an IEP or something with, you know, a sub or para or something, not a para, but a sub who's coming in. You know, I don't know what, what privacy laws are around that. But I, I think that these, that's a really important area to look at, that who's coming in to cover those students when there's absences known, known about at least in advance. So I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And inclusion, I think, is another area that's exceptionally important. I know since I see him sitting, well, he was sitting in the back, our first selectman, who put together, you know, a diversity, a committee on, you know, anti-hate and diversity and inclusion. And I think it's so important for us to make sure that we model that for our youngest students all the way up through. And it's an area I'd love to, to dig in deeper with you. I know we had a, Ami Muth came up earlier, was talking about that as well. It's something that we really do need to, to do throughout in so many different areas. So thank you guys for highlighting some areas for wish we can do a better job and also sharing some of the positives with us.
On that note, I think that we have to, with the inclusion, we're the Special Education Advisory Council, but we're inclusion. So it's general ed. So oftentimes we're told to stay in our lane with special ed. And we, we can't be told that anymore. Not, I'm not saying by anyone up here, but by, you know, general ed and staff members don't think they have to adhere to any of our regulations or work with our students and we have to stop that. And everybody has to be at the table because especially with our special ed department, they can only do so much. It has to be with the whole entire department. So we ask you to make sure inclusion is throughout our district with staff, students as well.
Yeah, you, you, you properly addressed it too in the changing of the culture and how we look at things in your report. And I, and I, I would say there is so much overlap. And I know we're constantly asked about budget, questions about how much we're spending in special education. I know you guys went through budget here too. And there is so much overlap. There's so many programs that we have as listed as general education that serve students with special education and learning difference and other needs, as well as in the general education population and are often listed there. So I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from. I often get similar comments, but that was a lovely little dance. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work effort and you put in it. This is something I'd like to take a deeper dive into with you guys. At least, you know, we have a couple of months before the start of next school year, so we can really get some stuff lined up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Carabillo with the Greenwich High School Wellness Center.
Good evening. Before we start with Mr. Pereira, I just want to say something about the arts department. As a former musician and music teacher, when I hear the students that have graduated and when I see our students performing up on stage, I do have to say that what they have shared with you is exactly what I took with me as I go through my career. So it was just outstanding. So thank you. You have seen the video that Mr. Pereira made about the wellness center and we are ready to take any questions that you have.
Questions? Comments? Okay.
First, I want to say thank you for the report. It was very informative and I, you know, one of the things that I think need, that we should be addressing is obviously understanding what you think your biggest challenge is and where that, and how to solve that challenge with respect to the wellness center.
Thank you, Mrs. Qualzky. Question? I think it's meeting the diverse needs of our students. The wellness center has a plethora of individuals that have very unique needs. Many of the students are not successful within the larger high school. That is why they are in the smaller setting with more supportive environment. So it really is dialing in on what that child needs to. environment. So it really is dialing in on what that child needs to be supported, to make sure that they are successful. Our goal is to make sure that they are transitioned back into the larger part of the high school for that, with the fluidity with the houses. So it's certainly giving our staff the time and the training to make sure that we are able to support that diverse learner that we see in front of us, which has certainly changed throughout the years.
Okay, well, thank you guys for all the work that you're doing in the wellness center. I've had the opportunity when we, when I toured the high school recently, I mean, I've been in and out, and, but I really had, got to have the opportunity to, to take a deeper look into the wellness center while we were there on a tour. And it was, it was really wonderful to see, you know, how many, you know, students were clearly like that. You see the difference in the posture, right, of these students when they're in there. They're more comfortable, they're, they're clearly not getting overstimulated and overwhelmed by all of the hustle and bustle throughout the student center and the larger classes. So I really appreciate that. And also the incredible work we do with, and to thank our community partners, I really should say, for all the incredible work they do. They come in and provide all of these wonderful services to our students and to their families. And I appreciate, you know, we don't often share that information here at the board meetings with the general public of how much support and how much connection we have with those community partners. So I think it's really, really lovely to see how we, we, you know, are part of the community in that regards. I had a quick question. When you were talking about, there was a slide in, in the presentation about what, and what makes the center special. And you were talking about students who meet with their case managers when there's concerns and there's issues and how to address those. And I was just, I don't know how often students tend to meet, and, you know, with their case managers. Is that somebody that takes place at their guidance counselor?
So, oh, I mean, to cut you off, sir, sorry, before I lose my train of thought. The case managers are academic-led teacher. So the case man, I mean, the thing that makes them unique and what makes the center so special is those individuals in that building. So Jen Lee, Angela Tereski, Peter Cronin, and Ashley Riley, who are currently within there, they're the ones who build that connection with those kids to make them feel supported. And it is like an extension of their family. For that, I think that's why there's that comfortability with the kids in there. So depending on how the student's doing, whether it's positive or negative, because we have our ebbs and flows too. Those level reviews that we talked about, we try to include everybody within that. So that would be the teacher, myself as the administrator helps to oversee that, their, their guidance counselor, we invite their parents and anybody else who is significant within their life too. Or as a coach, somebody on the community. So we really try to support the child that way. And that is, that is what we, we talk about with that lower review piece of it, that we're still fine tuning.
That's fantastic. I mean, I, you know, it's, it's nice for them to, we always talk about the importance of, of a student having a connection, that, that personal connection with someone in the building. And that, that can make or break an entire academic career for a student. So I, it's nice to hear that that's something that's really a positive about the, the wellness center. And I know you also talked about seat time and workdays. And I was just wondering if you could explain a little bit more about what seat time and workdays are and how they support the academic and social emotional needs of the students in the program. And then maybe a little bit more about, you were talking about the foundations class internship. I'd love to hear a little bit more about that. I don't know, like, I know our seniors do an internship. I don't know if this is just for seniors or for students at all levels in the, in the wellness center.
So we'll start with, the first piece was the, the seat time and the work time. So many of our students have not been successful. So because of that, sometimes we need to kind of bring them back into the fold. So that would be perhaps on a day we kind of take them out of their academic classes, we put them in a nice quiet space. We push in with our case manager, we push in with their teachers, we push in with their mental health staff to, to kind of catch them back up to make sure. So we really do try to use that part to fit the flexibility for them. So they can see that they can be successful and help to facilitate them back into the classes that they sometimes maybe not have a connection with that, to help facilitate the connection, the relationship with, if it's not their case manager, perhaps that general education teacher is pushing to the center too. So that's kind of how we utilize our work and our seat times for that. We let the parents know, we let the teachers know ahead of time too, that, hey, we're gonna take a workday or a seat day for the child. So that way they can get the work done, because sometimes they are significantly behind. You know, so we wanna make sure that they're keeping up with their academics now as a piece of it, because when you take Mathen as an example, as a building block, if they miss one or two lessons, and that might compound where they'll have some further frustration and may not access that again. So that's how we utilize that. And in terms of the foundations class, that was something that was put together two years ago. We kind of piggybacked off what Winrose was kind of doing for that. So it's a unique opportunity for some of our students who are seniors and juniors too, to have an internship, not in a traditional sense of what we do as the larger high school, because again, some of these students may not want to access that for that. So that's something that we've been working on, and we're, we're nice to, we've grown that now to our ninth and 10th grade. And we're really focusing on our ninth and 10th grade to, because we recognize that some of these kids may not have the smoothest transition to the high school into working with mental health staff and our case managers to kind of develop that skill set for the kids to be successful for that. So that's gonna be a new, new addition to what we offer in the center starting next year.
Yeah, I saw that was on your list of things to focus on next year, to expand upon that, which is why I was, I was asking. So this brings me to my last question for the moment, because I'm sure others have it. You know, I know you mentioned something. It's funny, because we just heard about this from our previous presentation. Staffing, that you had gone from five special education teachers and now you're down to, is it three special education teachers or like 2.7? Because you have at least one that does a point three, it's over, yeah, a community connections. So, and I know you have general education teachers as well in there, as well as social workers and other support staff. I know we need more social workers throughout the district full-time, and that's something that someday hopefully we'll have a budget for. But I just really wanted to see, you know, the, for the students there, do you feel that you have enough support? And, you know, how these, how our educators in that program are feeling, if they feel that there's a, if there were more teachers, we'd be able to have more students access the program, obviously, or whatever.
I mean, listen, I certainly always welcome more staff. Never gonna say no to it. You know, but I understand that we have constraints that we have to abide to. So we certainly look at how can we utilize what we have currently in terms of resources with the push in general and, and things of that nature for that. So we do try to do our best with what we have to make it work for our children. I've been working with our scheduling, had a schedule a little bit differently moving forward for that. So it's gonna be interesting to see how that scheduling model that we're gonna look at next year with the foundations class, where we're looking at additional support classes for some of our general education teachers with our case managers works for that. So certainly, yes, we will welcome more staff, but we're, we're utilizing what we have in front of us.
But we don't turn away students if they need this program. The only reason why I'm asking is because in 2021, you said that other than Jan Ed, you said there were 42 students with special educational needs in the program. And then the year, after that, it went down a little bit, and now it's been pretty consistent the past three years with lower staff. So I just wanna make sure that that's not hindering a student who might need the support there.
Correct. I think part of that is our better job with our MTSS process. Right? So we're, we do not turn away our students, but we do make sure that when we meet in the houses, we're looking at it. We have an excellent team that really thinks outside the box. So when a student is brought to us, we try to also say, hey, have we tried X, Y, and Z as well back to the house for that as well? And once we've utilized those, then a lot of times that child then does either find some success with them back in the house, or we're gonna have them down up in the center. So I think so we're finding our, our process for that.
Yeah, well, thank you. This is a really helpful update that we're hearing, because I know the board has been really asking for this. And I guess my last comment and question is at some point, I'd love to talk to you about, we're not talking about graduation rates, but maybe it's, you know, whether they have somebody specifically in their guidance to talk about what, what they're looking for post, post-college and how we can support that transition as well. But that's not for tonight.
Anything else? Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So the next on the list is with respect to the Havmire property. So I've asked our first selectman Fred Camillo to come down and present to the board some information regarding a potential move of the Board of Ed Administration out of the Havmire building and into other property. It's been being looked at. It gives us an opportunity to ask some questions. So welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and guests. For all the hockey fans, the Rangers are down three to two, in case you're wondering. Eight minutes left, I know. Thank you for this time. I know it's a long night for you. Andy Deuce here, former BET member, who led a committee that I put together a while ago to look into this, to gather details and to bring us to this point. Brief history before I turn it over to Andy. This is at least the third attempt in the last 24 years to relocate the Board of Education out of a property that is worth anywhere from 74 to $100 million. We own the building. The first attempt was led by Peter Malkin and B. Crumbine, who you all may know. And they had $35 million pledged in, I believe, 2001. The then administration at the time did not want to move, and we lost that money. And then there was another attempt, I think, about eight years later. Now, this is the third attempt. The difference is the building has deteriorated even more. And the difference is this time the administration is willing to go. They're, they're eager to go. It's not healthy for them to stay in there with a condition where there's mold and other things going on there. And it's, it's gonna be costing us a lot of money, taxpayers' money, to, to stay there and to redo it, to, to, again, house a government entity in the mid, in the heart of our business, commercial, and entertainment district. When people hear about that, they ask, why are we, why have we done, why have we been doing that for years? Now, we've heard from some members of the board that, well, they want them to, they have to be in a government building, and no one else does that. Well, that's not true. Fairfield and New Canaan are two that we have spoken to, and I think Ben Branyan may have spoken to them. And, and they're quite happy with their rental, long-term rentals. Now, it doesn't have to stay that way forever, but right now there is no other space in, in Greenwich as far as public buildings. I'll have, I'll repeat, they are gonna have to move at some point. We do have a place that fits perfectly. We looked at a couple. One required about $7 million just to retrofit it, which I think was, was ridiculous, and I thought would have been a waste of money. One we've looked at now that would fit perfectly. You know, we could look at other ones, but time is running out, or running out of runway on this, this one right now. But again, this is something that, the timing is perfect. This is the first time in memory that the administration would love to relocate. We've heard lots of things, you know, maybe we'll build on top of the, in back of Town Hall. Well, that was a gym years ago, and they tore it down 40 years ago. Or 45 years ago, when it reopened in 1980. So again, I'll, before I turn it over to Andy, I'm happy to answer any questions, but a lot of work has gone into this. And this is something that should be returned to the people of Greenwich. It's a beautiful 1892 building. The first iteration of this attempt to reclaim the building for, for the public would have included a public farming arts center, black box theater in the basement, a cafe, and some other space, I think on top rented out. There's, we would like, we are now assembling a new task force. And I already have, I think, five people are ready to go, but there's a few more that I haven't contacted yet that are ready to go to look at what we would want this RFP to look like for the town. There's lots of people coming forward with great ideas, but there may be some things we haven't even thought of yet, but it's exciting. It's an exciting town. It's a game, a time for the town, it's a game changer for us. But again, the first step was to find something for the administration that they could, that would, they would function in better, much better than they are right now. And I think if you talk to people that work in the building, they'll tell you the same thing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy Deuce.
Thanks, Fred.
I think we, some of us have some questions before you turn it over.
Sure. Sure enough.
Sure.
Fire away.
What's the approximate worth of Town Hall? If you're saying that we can't be in a building that has the worth that it has when it was deeded to the board, what is the value of Town Hall?
That I don't know, but it's, Town Hall's not on Greenwich Avenue, and it's not in the heart of the commercial and the entertainment and the business district.
What, now what difference does that make?
Big difference. Big, it's, it's in the center of town, which is great, but it's on Greenwich Avenue. There's much more worth on Greenwich Avenue. But again, this was a high school that was built in 1925, our 100th anniversary is next year. It closed in 1970 and reopened as a Town Hall in 1980. You know, the, this building where they're in now is falling apart. It's not fully used. People know that. People can't access it. It's our building, but you can't access the building unless you have business with the Board of Education. Doesn't make sense. Town Hall's fully used, right? So there, there's not a, to me, it's not a comparable comparison.
I would say that I have a lot of questions on the finances, and I find it slightly, I, I find it a little bit offensive when you say that, like, we don't have the right to be there, when it was deeded to the board.
I didn't say you didn't have the right to be there.
That was the implication.
No, don't put words in my mouth. I did not say that. I said it, it, it's something that's baffling that you think, seem to think that you've told me out of your own mouth, the words out of your own mouth, that they have to be in a government building. That's absurd.
I, I said that was my preference, but I can only speak for myself.
Okay.
So the other question is, what is the cost of the lease that is being proposed for a long-term rental?
So again, the, I don't know if I wanna go through the whole details of it. I know they've offered six months free rent, and they've waived the first three years rent increases. Now, again, if that is, if this is something that this board says, well, you know, we don't wanna pay that much money, fine, we're gonna lose this deal, but certainly we will continue to look. But we don't wanna keep hitting roadblocks and having things thrown against the, the wall to see what sticks to slow walk this, because again, I've heard that it's gotta be in a government building, and that's just not the case.
Kathleen?
Hi. So I, this is definitely, you're right, something I remember talking to Peter Tessie about this and years ago, because I was, and Rick Crowell, and we sat together and thought about this. So there is definitely something we've been talking about for a long time. And so I think it's great that we're having this conversation, honestly. I wish we'd had a little bit more preparation and information ahead of time. But I did tour the space at Railroad Avenue, and look, it's gorgeous. It's Class A space. Frankly, I wouldn't put my company in it because it's a little bit too pricey, and I argue that my company probably could go in a nicer place, no offense, than our government employees. So I would say that I sort of did some back-of-the-envelope math, because at the time, I was able to get some of the conversation around the rates, and Cody, follow me with, follow me here. But it was about 24,000 square feet at $108 plus utilities. Yes, you might have six months free, but you're looking at about $3 million a year.
2.8, yeah.
That's, well, 2.8 without the utilities. And so I mean, I just think it's fiscally irresponsible to spend $3 million a year for government employees. I'm sorry to, to my staff, but as a taxpayer, that just kind of freaks me out. However.
I'd like to respond to that when you're done.
Okay. However, I think we do need to think about where we can go in terms of a government building, because again, I just sort of did some of the back-of-the-envelope math. And, you know, workforce and how we're, how we're working in buildings now is quite different, right? A lot of us are going hybrid. I suspect, you know, we're not in, I know the Board of Ed is in a staff full-time, but I don't know if everyone at Town Hall is. So if we could rethink how we're using the space at Town Hall, hey, like, why are we not having that conversation, right? There's 130,000 square feet at Town Hall, there's 300-some on employees. If you look at the average square foot you need per person nowadays, frankly, like 175 square feet. I mean, there's so much simple math that when I started to do it, I was like, frankly, it would be like luxurious for our employees to also be in Town Hall. So I just wanted to think about that, because as a taxpayer, that's fantastic.
Yeah, that was brought up in 2002, and the Board of Ed at that point did not want to be in Town Hall with, under the umbrella of town government. But that may have changed now. I do think it's fiscally irresponsible to just keep throwing money into a building that's falling apart. That's only gonna get worse. And again, the estimate that I think the board, the BOE had of $20 million, well, I took somebody in that is well-known around the world, and he's, lives in town, and he said, this is $50 million all day long to renovate it. Again, we chased away the $35 million 24 years ago. It's, I'm gonna be on the taxpayer. Are we gonna spend $50 million? Or even if it was 20 million, which it's not, but if it was, just to put a government entity back on in the middle of Greenwich Avenue. Now, you talked about the Town Hall. Yes, we've had those conversations. And we do work, we have, people can work from home. We talked about this prior to the pandemic. North Carolina and New Jersey were allowing state workers to work two days a week from remotely, the ones that didn't have to be on-site. Kind of thought, how could they be more productive and how could be more efficient? But we found out during the pandemic, it was the case. So a lot do work, and, you know, again, I'm happy to look into continuing and maybe even, you know, have the task force delve into with all of the departments to see. But again, this is up to the, this is the Board of Education Administration's call on that. I don't know how many could work remotely. Maybe a lot, I just don't know. That's, that's a question better that we could maybe sit down and, and go over, but that's, and again, certainly, I, the 2.8 million to 3, that's a lot of money. I, I agree. I agree. I don't like spending it either, but we don't have much more choice. I mean, the building is deteriorating. So we are looking at every other, you know, spot around. I know the, the board, the administration prefers to be downtown. We could find a lot, space a lot cheaper in other parts of town. We know that, but we're trying to accommodate the board as best we can. We're still looking and we're, we've talked to commercial brokers, they're keeping their eye out there. So we could do, definitely do that. And again, I don't know as far as how many we could, you know, I would love to share Town Hall with you and, and, you know, take another look at that. But again, you, the board would have to be comfortable doing something like that. They were not in 2002 or 2003.
Sophie?
Yeah, I just, I want to say also, I agree, you know, having, having the Board of Ed on Greenwich Avenue has always struck me as being strange ever since I moved here. You're in the center of the business district. But I, I would like to see sort of a building utilization study for the town of Greenwich and thinking about how we're using the space and not just that some people work remote now, both people in Town Hall and Board of Ed people, but also that so much has been digitized. Since you were saying like looking at Town Hall in 2002, right? That was before email and, you know, we do a lot of stuff online now. I mean, I don't, I used to go into Town Hall to get my beach pass and things like that, you know, now that's all online. So I wonder if there's an opportunity to go through the building and think about the real estate that's being taken up by filing cabinets and things like that, right? And so, because it was a high school for 1,900 kids, so there were a lot of people in there.
To do a deeper dive, yeah.
Yeah, to do a deeper dive, because I think, you know, frankly, yeah, the same thing with the lease. When I think, I agree, you think, oh, it's expensive to renovate Havemeyer Building, which it certainly will be regardless of who renovates it and for what purpose. But to spend upwards of $50 million for a 15-year lease for the Board of Ed, like, I agree as a taxpayer, I don't, I don't want to do that.
It's a lot, it's a lot, yeah, I know. And again, this one lined up, the board went in there. I offered to trade Town Hall and we, we would go in there, but it's beautiful. And it's, but again, we're looking, we're continuing to look to see if we can get something better. But if this one, if there's not, you know, a fifth vote on this one for this, then this will die in, you know, the coming weeks. But again, we're not going away on this one and I like your idea about a deeper dive. I think that's smart. Certainly we can collaborate. I think we know somebody in common that knows both, are going to say, both entities. So I think we can definitely do that. I don't know if we can get to where they could fit in Town Hall comfortably, but I'm happy to look at that. I don't know if we're going to, you know, if we propose to the BET to build the section back off that they tore off 44 years ago. I don't know how it will be received, but I, I'm, look, I'm willing to ask for anything. I think it's, it would be great to have you in a better space that it's functioning better for you and it's healthier. But also it'd be great for the town of Greenwich to get something back. I mean, that was, that's transformational there to do something with that beautiful building and return it to, you know, not to its former glorified glory past, but I think really maybe even something better. Because again, it was, it was a school in 1892, but we had a little, that auditorium, which was really nice. But there's a lot of ideas out there, some that we probably have not even thought of. So I'm glad to see that there's, there's some, you know, enthusiasm for and acknowledgement that we really should be, the time has come. And again, the building, if we're here in 12 months discussing it, that means the building's gotten even worse. And then you may have a problem on our hands as far as with the employees. So, but I'm, I think you're right and we'll definitely take a deeper dive. And I will turn it over to Andy before I.
I have one question and maybe it's a question for Andy, I'm not quite sure. But to Kathleen's point on doing the math at 2.8 a year and obviously assuming it would increase over time as all things do, has the town thought of a way or has your office thought of a way that it would somehow be, you could use whatever you're doing or your ideas with respect to Havemeyer that would offset that cost from a taxpayer perspective?
As far as like what, what would be, right now with them still in there or if we were?
No, if we were to, if, if, if the Board of Ed is to move to another location and to incur a 2.8 million dollar a year lease, which will, as I said, eventually go up. The question is, the plans that you're looking at for what you want to do with the Havemeyer Building, is that, or is there an ability that would offset the expense of the Board of Ed relocated someplace else?
Yeah, so we had a commercial broker looking at this and telling us, because there's a lot more space there than they thought. And he thinks that we now could, if you, whether, we gave him different scenarios, right? If you rented the, you know, for retail space, for office space, top two floors, downstairs, we could get another 50 to 75 spaces without putting, parking spaces for everybody without putting much money into it. The cleanest thing to do were, would be a retailer to go into the, take most of the building. What retailers would do is they'll go in there and they will actually renovate, we've seen this, millions of dollars and pay a pretty good price per square foot. That's the, that's the way we actually would make more money, but still to try and keep some part of the building open for the public and with some public use. Office space won't bring as much. And certainly they're not, usually an office, a company is not going to go in there and spend a couple million dollars just renovating. Retailers seem to, will do that more often. But he, he's running numbers right now, different scenarios. And that's why this new group we're putting together wanted to look at some different scenarios, whether, what we would like to see there and whether it's a performing arts center as part of it. We, WeWorks was also a, a, a a preference by one of the developers who looked at it. Right, one week before the pandemic, a resident went by there with me and he had an Italian opera company that he was in contact with that wanted to come in and renovate it and pay us rent. And they, I think they said that 25% of the space they didn't need for what they, and they were willing to let the town do it. Now, they were willing to pay for it all themselves. But again, if you're, it's different scenarios. If you're going to do a public-private partnership and a, and a company is going to go in there for office space and renovate it, you're not going to get top dollar per square foot. Retailers, you'll get a better price, I know, maybe up to 65, maybe. I don't think it would be that much with a, with, but these are all different scenarios that, you know, it's above me right now, because I think we need to have a group looking at it, just similar to the task force we put together, not only for this building, but also what we did at Greenwich Plaza, which saved a, we were debating whether it was worth air rights, because it was tied to these air rights, whether it was worth 10 or 15 million dollars. Well, we found out they were worth $600 million in the year 2057. That all parties agree now that it was. So putting a task force together, I think, is the answer. And I've already started to do that, because they're going to uncover a lot more things and maybe a lot of different scenarios. Revenue will come back to the town. But again, I agree. The one thing I will agree with is the, the price tag for this other one, which is a beautiful space. It's expensive, right? And so if we can find something better and have the money, rent this out, have money coming in and also have it returned to the public where it's not costing, where it's a wash or even, you know, northward, you know, north of what we're, we're paying in rent, that's great. But again, other towns have done it and they've, and I don't know what they're paying, we can look into that. Maybe Andy has that numbers, those numbers, I don't know. But I think looking into all of this will, and in doing it quick. I mean, I'm not talking about dragging this out for two or three years. I think it's, time is of the essence right now.
Karen? Well, I was going to say, I, I know this has been a discussion topic on and off for years throughout town and for multiple different reasons and ways. And I know that this is something that, you know, was discussed when you put together the first committee. Thank you, Mr. Deuce, for being here. But I don't know if you're presenting part of that report, I think we all probably read it. And we're certainly in early stages. There were a lot of recommendations that were in that report that, you know, haven't been, been addressed. And definitely think if you're putting together another committee, obviously besides having one of us, I'd like, I think maybe it's a discussion we could have and having to say also in some individuals who are being put on it. But, you know, I, there's some more, I know you and I've talked about this many a time. I'd love to be able to have an opportunity. I still think that there's so many ways that, to do some of the work on that building and have shared use going forward. You know, I, I know recently sitting through all the RTM meetings that, for instance, the senior center, which is across the way, I've heard about the creaky elevator and many other, you know, concerns within that building. You know, we have adult education courses there. Is there a way for us to do some of the renovations on Havemeyer and return the, you know, the, the main floor and the theater to, to use and bring the senior center over to shared space? And then you have another facility across the way. Just, you know, I look across at the former, you know, a post office that's been sold for, you know, to, you know, retail space. And it's, it makes me a little sad when I've gone back and read all the meetings and the town discussions in the 1800s for that building and the, the, you know, the history behind it. You know, and it's interesting that you brought up the, the train station, which I know is a long discussion and it's open. There's nothing there now, because it was going, everybody moved out and then we haven't sold it, so it's sitting empty. Which, you know, so I, my two comments are, one is, you know, I, it's a lot to ask taxpayers to spend this kind of money every single year to house us for, you know, long, but long after this board is no longer seated, long after you are no longer seated. I mean, this is a forever sort of situation, if, what you're possibly discussing. I'd still think I'd love to have the opportunity to see what we can do as a shared use. I know we've talked about it before. I don't know if any consideration has been, or work has been done to see what the true cost of repairs, bringing the building up to code and ADA compliance is. I'd like to have a real understanding of that. You know, and have we also looked at any cost comparisons on rental space? I just know it's a lot to ask. I mean, I'm open to ideas and suggestions. I know we've talked about many of them. And I truly think it's, it is a gem of a space. And I, and I think there's so many ways that we can utilize that space to, to share with members of the community. But, you know, I'd love to have that opportunity to talk about it with you. But, you know, have we done any of that other work?
Sure, yeah. And I'll turn it over to Andy in a second. You said that the railroad station is empty now, it's been sold. No, the, it hasn't been sold. It's the same person that, it's the only privately owned railroad station in the state.
Oh, I didn't say the train station was, I just meant all of the retail spaces are there that are empty.
It's the same owner.
You know, no, but I'm saying, without a plan to have every, I'm just saying, for instance, if we have the Board of Ed move out and that building is sitting there empty.
No, there's plans.
For a long period of time.
No, there's plans. They're, what they're going to do is they're going to have a couple of restaurants in there. They're, they have.
I'm not talking about the train station. I'm just saying, you use that as an example. So I'm saying, it's just, no, it's been sitting there empty for so long. That's my concern, without having a true plan for what we would do with that space and then asking taxpayers. We just passed the largest budget in the history of Greenwich, which is clearly something that was needed. You know, we've, the board has asked for repairs to be done to the Havemeyer facility and building for many years and every year, even long before you were seated in as a selectman and long before I was on this board. And they've been turned down repeatedly. So, you know, the town has also allowed some of that deterioration to occur. So all I'm asking is to talk, have we considered or done any work to see what the true cost of those repairs would be to bring the building back to code and ADA compliance? Like I said, I hesitate to leave that building empty without knowing all of the other options and then asking the taxpayers to spend this kind of money every single year. And we know the costs will only go up. And I don't ever want to position, I think a lot of us were concerned about making sure it has a, we have a home as a board. You don't want a transient Board of Education moving all over, you know.
Yeah, no, and I agree. I think we're, we're on the same page. The, we want to have a plan. That's why we want to get a group together to go over what you want the RFP to look like. Do you, you know, we had lots of great ideas in the past, but I think maybe there's some other things out there that we haven't thought about. So I agree. There's so much potential with that building. It really, it's, the more I think about it, the more excited I get. So I, but again, we, we are fighting the clock on this one as far as the deterioration of it. So I agree, you know, I think there's some agreement on the price of the, the building that we found there. But if that's not going to work, we'll continue to, to look. And maybe we'll also, you know, do the deep dive, like you're saying, and maybe work together and see what we can do as far as possibility of, of sharing the Town Hall. But we'd have to really move around a lot of, a lot of parts. But I'm happy to, to look.
I offer myself.
Cody, have you a question?
I was actually just going to make a comment, just because it seems fitting. I would just encourage my colleagues to think about the, it's been 23 years, I guess, since this first attempt to redo this building. This is a tricky one, because it's the intersection of a lot of different government approvals is required to make this happen, including the buy-in from the administration. And I don't want to let the great be the enemy of the good here in the sense that if we lose the opportunity, it could be another 20 years. And it seems very suboptimal to have a lot of administrators. To Sophie's point, it's, you would never, you would never design it this way if you were building it from scratch. Nor if we were sitting in, I guarantee you, if we had the office space that Tony wants to get, we wouldn't be sitting here going, this doesn't make sense, let's move into the building on the avenue. And so, you know, it's a good, it's a good way to get out of the inertia of the status quo is to kind of reverse the situation. I do think that $108 or $106 a square foot, that's like premium, you know, commercial real estate. My company, we pay 60 bucks a square foot in Koscob. So like, maybe you're overpaying a million bucks a year. Okay, would I be okay overpaying a million bucks a year to avoid going another 20 years of this kind of suboptimal situation? Yeah. And one way I would think about the math is you can't only count the new rent. You have to consider what the economic cost of sitting in this building is. So, you know, pick a number, say the building's worth 50 million bucks or whatever it is. That rent that we're paying is sort of, there's an implied cap rate in the real estate world. And if it's 2.8 million, you're talking about a 4% or 5% rate, which is really low. In other words, that would be an economically positive trade overall for taxpayers by doing that. And that's acknowledging that I think the rent, 108 is, that's like what fancy hedge funds would pay in Greenwich. So you could probably do better, but I would take it over the status quo. And so the one thing I would, you know, I've, I think I have some street cred on being tight on the budget. And I just, I think if we have the opportunity, especially if we have the buy-in from, you know, the administration, it, it would be a shame to miss that window and, and, you know, have everybody kind of coordinate. The last thing I'd say is it's, it's really hard for any government body to relinquish control of something, especially something that's so beautiful. But real estate is not part of our mission as a Board of Ed. And so as hard as it is to say, well, this is kind of ours right now and we want to do special things with it, I think it would be prudent to consider saying, you know what? We will hand it over because we want to be focused on student outcomes and this doesn't relate to that. That's all my thoughts.
Thank you, Cody. Before I turn it over to Andy, Rangers won 5 to 3.
Wow. Okay, Dr. Jones, Adam Scher and the rest of the board, thank you for, for your questions. By the way, great questions. I think Fred should come every month to your meetings is, is my recommendation. Anyway, sorry. Anyway, I assume everyone's read our report, the one we submitted last November. We spent about a year on the report and our goal is really to frame the opportunity, not answer every question. And it's kind of like a simultaneous equation, because we don't know what the cost will be to, to put the staff in and we don't know what the return will be on the property. We just feel there's an opportunity given to this disparate values. Let me correct a few misconceptions. It wasn't deeded to the schools. It was, money was given to the town in 1892, 1891, actually. And, and by state law, it was formally given to the municipality back in 1915 or so. But the schools do have squatters' rights. As long as you want to occupy the building for the, for the Board of Education and staff, you're welcome to stay there. That, that's fine. What's, the confusion I think arises is from the maintenance fund. And that was set up by the son of Henry Havemeyer back in 1909. And the monies were set aside to maintain the building so long it was used for educational purposes. And that's, that's been true ever since it was set up. It's, it's, the fund's kind of low these days, so it's really not much of an issue anymore. The, the second misconception is the ability to do renovations in the building. And the first like we mentioned, some, some mold or some term. We had an engineer working with our committee very closely and we found no overt issues. But he did not do any invasive investigations. We did not want to open up anything. And our concern is, if you open up stuff, and again, we found nothing. We did not find anything there. But if you open up stuff, there's a chance of asbestos, lead paint, mold, you never know. And our concern is looking forward to what needs to be done over the next decade in that building is you can't have staff remain in the Is you can't have staff remain in the building and do some repairs. It's just that simple, uh, safety wise. So that was one of the reasons why we, we thought, let's look at alternative space and, and it was our surprise because when we started this committee, COVID impact didn't quite fully manifest itself, but we soon discovered there's lots of alternatives to, to town hall, to town space. And and we kept finding more and more tracks of private office space, uh, here in town. And about a year ago, the town in Canaan found a private office space for some of its school staff. And I guess Fearfield did it about a year ago as well. Uh, no, not quite. Okay. Well, anyway. Anyway, so, so we, 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 we did the research. We worked closely with council. We, we, uh, we did the investigation with, uh, the land, the, uh, the historic, uh, landmark commission. Uh, we, uh, and we said, here's the process and, uh, the committee members, by the way, I should mention them. I should thank them. Uh, Christina Downey, who you know, uh, and, and Joe Kelly, we're on the, on our team. Along with Bill Drake and Miriam Cruiser from the BET, uh, very helpful. But we're not real estate experts. We're, we're, uh, town geeks, so to speak. And, uh, and that's one reason why this, this perspective of, RFP, request for proposals is so important because we don't know everything. And we're going to get a lot of good information sent to us and we're going to have it evaluated by real pros who, who know real estate here in the town. And that hopefully will be done over the next few months. The current opportunities to, to move the staff into local office space, there's some great opportunities now. That may change in a month. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll see what we have. But as I said, this is like a simultaneous equation. We can't solve everything at once, or we can, but it's tough. Uh, but hopefully over the next few months, we'll have a lot more information and we'll be working very closely with you guys to make sure we do the right thing for everyone. Uh, whether it's going to be retail, retail space, a mixed use office property, I, I don't know. But one last thing. The efforts to, the school staff has been here for about 75 years, a little bit more. Uh, efforts to move the staff out of the building have gone on for five decades, not since 2001. And, uh, and this is really the first time where we actually have some traction, uh, in terms of, uh, an alternative space and a more of a compelling need safety of the staff to, to move along. Anyway, your questions are great. If you have more questions, I'm, I'm ready to answer them, but go ahead.
I'm going to be very direct. Um, you're a member, former member of the BT, the Finance Board. And you know, because it was a taxpayer funded project to go through all of our school buildings, including Havemeyer for our facilities master plan. And I hear 2.8 million, 10 years. That's, that's, that, and maybe then some, that's a renovation of Havemeyer. So I think it's short sighted. I've heard Fred say want to return it to the people, black box theater, cafe. I've heard retailers. Um, I mean, I know we have a black box theater at the library that was just renovated for millions of dollars. It also has a cafe. I don't know that we need another one down the street. But I'm not the one to answer whether that property is utilized for the purpose that you're proposing another one. But, um, so the use of the space, I just don't understand. The financials, I, I would, I have no comfortability going before your current colleagues and some of your former ones to say, please give us this money. I mean, they'll laugh at us. So I, I mean, I, I know that you're coming to us because we have the vote. However, this is a, a kind of a Pandora's box. So, you know, I, I have a big problem privatizing a public asset. Right now it's a public asset for every parent and every kid who comes to have a meeting and conduct their school business because it is a school building. So I, I don't understand the notion of returning it to the people when I believe everybody should be able to go upstairs and see what school was like in the 1800s. And I know the Havemeyer family was very committed to keeping this building utilized the way it is now and not being a restoration hardware. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Uh, uh, 2.8 million. Uh, where's that figure from? I'm not.
Fred just said 2.8 million.
Oh, 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 sorry. The rent. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah. I, I, we don't have any sense for how much it'll cost to renovate the building. I mean, basically they'll gut the inside, it possibly if approved.
I was just quoting from the facilities master plan.
Right.
Which was, you know, five years ago.
Okay. So that was a quote for renovating Havemeyer.
Yeah, it was about 25.
Yeah. And that, that understates everything. It's, it's, that was not a detailed study frankly, uh, on the Havemeyer, but it, it's a data point. Look, we're gonna be learning a lot of information over the next few months as, as the, uh, responses to the RFP come in and we'll learn and we'll, we'll make decisions when we get the more information. Right now, we don't know enough to make a good decision. All we're trying to do is get approval to go to the next step. Yes.
What approval for the next step do you need from us? That's, I'm unclear on that.
I think we, well, according to, to, uh, uh, Town Council, we need approval of the board to, to allow us to consider the, the new space for the staff. I think that's right. Right? Yeah.
But I'm hearing two things. Like if you, you're wanting to do an, an RFP to see what you could do with the Havemeyer building, right?
I don't know. I don't know if we can circulate that without the approval of the board.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's, that's, cause I'm, I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing one, approval from the board to find a new place and, and agree to that. And or two, and two, the RFP process to see what you would do with the Havemeyer building and what that would elicit.
Yeah. I mean, I don't believe we need, uh, approval from you to have an RFP, but I certainly will talk with the town attorney tomorrow, uh, and get back to you as far as that goes. Uh, but again, um, there's, some of us have a very clear uh, difference of opinion on, on public buildings and, uh, you know, I remember, remember my father went to that, he's not with us anymore, but he went to that school in the 1930s and he used to laugh and say, I don't know why it was on, on the avenue. So, uh, but it was, it wasn't the only one. There was another, there was another school up the, on the avenue on the same side back in the, in the thirties and forties and fifties. So, but times, if, times, you know, times change and, you know, land becomes more valuable. We didn't, we put a, you know, a sewer plant on the water in the fifties because they thought it had to be in the water. We found out it doesn't have to be in the water. Um, we've done a lot of, we found out a lot of things that just aren't so today. So, and this is what, this is a shining example of something that just didn't have to be. So we'd like to correct that and, and yes, return it to the people.
So could I just sort of bring a few things to conclusion? So you don't need a Board of Ed vote to go do an RFP. So have at it. Number one. Two, I just think that, um, you know, town hall was also a high school. So I think in some ways I really would love to analyze this and I'm really excited about the concept of all of us. I remember during, um, I don't know, something Tony, even Chief Heavey said, oh, you know, if you ever need to use our facilities for conference rooms, we have a lot of conference room space. So I think we need to be really strategic here. We're, you know, happy to sort of analyze what happens at Havemeyer. But I would love at the same time for your committee to be looking at, I mean, I just started to do some back of the envelope math on the square footage between town hall and the, the police center and just in terms of the conference rooms they have there. And there is so much potential for us to use the current assets we have and redeploying our employees. And I know this is just out of nowhere, but I just, I think it would be so wonderful for the taxpayer. It'd be a win-win, right? If we actually, if you find something for Havemeyer and you can actually bring our government employees to be in other already town owned assets. How is that not a great thing? So, um, I mean, in terms of fiscal responsibility, that would be a win. So I think we should look at that.
Okay. And I'll tell the chief that you're taking part of his building.
I remember him saying, he actually, right? During, during something, I don't remember what he said, but he was like, if you ever need our, our classrooms for conference.
You guys have had meetings before I was on the board.
Feel free to use it.
Use their space for meetings.
I just, I'm just throwing other ideas out there.
I mean, as far as, I mean, permanently, that may be a, a more of an issue there with them permanent, but certainly, yeah. And we, we just like our, uh, but I do like the, the deeper dive as far as remote. And again, I don't know who has to be on site in the administration. That's something that maybe we could work together on. And if we can come to some realization of who can be remote, we can measure work performance. We know that now. Maybe we could do that, but good, the, a former BET member, um, wanted them just two years ago, but, um, he had, he had y'all in the basement. So, uh, cause he thought we could recon, you know, reconfigure, but it would just, at that point, we just, it wouldn't have worked. But again, we really didn't do a deeper dive as far as the whole building. We tossed things around, but maybe we can, uh, we could have this, uh, committee also look into it. But thank you for your time.
I just wanted to add, um, like I, I think doing the RFP is really important and that should be the next step. And actually to Cody's point, in order to do the math and to sort of understand it, we need to do the RFP because we need to know what is the value of the building because it'd be very expensive to renovate and, um,
And we didn't, we didn't say it's going to be a lease, not a sale of town.
Okay.
And presumably there'll be some sort of return, uh, rent paid to the town based on, on the performance of the, uh,
Oh, it's not a long time. Yeah. I just, I mean, I would assume that they would want, you know, if they're going to put 40 million dollars into renovating the building, they're probably going to want a bunch of free rent for a long time.
Structured so that they get a disproportionate return until we get the capital back. Then they will have more, uh, equity dispersed into the town.
We'll find examples because the, the commercial broker did tell us about examples where
Yeah.
between difference in retail and office and what they're, what they're willing to pay. Retail seems to be able to, to absorb the cost of, of renovating and then still pay a very decent price. But there was also, again, on the bottom floor there where if there's so many possibilities that he was throwing out there and I don't want to confuse everybody, but there was extra parking. There was, that wasn't even that much of an outlay of money. Um, anywhere from 50 to 75 spaces without even doing what I talked about was going into the grade where the ball field is. Which would get a lot more and which is more expensive, but certainly you could do it and it wouldn't be a standalone parking structure. But he said there's easily 50 to 75 spaces there if the building's redone. And that would help everybody. Okay. Thank.
Could they stay in the building while it's being renovated? Like you're doing with OG? I mean, we're keeping children in that building while we're renovating.
I don't know.
I don't think it'd be safe to have any employees remain in Havemeyer, in Havemeyer building, right?
I am.
It's an old building. I mean.
Although it'd need to be out of there.
We're doing this in Old Greenwich. Well, I think the difference between Old Greenwich is not that, one, it's, um, the way the school is structured and the way that's being added on. It's being done, one, in phases and two, it's not impacting where the students are that when the construction is happening. And I, because Havemeyer is so small in comparison to Old Greenwich and it's on top of each other, I don't think it's possible to do that in stages in a way that you could, uh, relocate that many staff to one different or administrators to one different floor while you do it. I just, it, it's an entirely different project.
And also be riskier and less, and more expensive to try to piecemeal. Basically it's an historic district that shall remain reinforced, but the whole inside would be re, re, redone, the whole thing. By the way, speaking of Old Greenwich, I don't know if you know this, uh, Henry Havemeyer also donated the funds for Old Greenwich.
He, I was, he built that school too. I've done a lot of research.
I was gonna say, you're not taking Old Greenwich School from us because that's also in the center of the commercial district.
From the school, no. You guys should rename Old Greenwich to the Havemeyer School. That's, that's an aside.
Well, the Havemeyer building used to be called the Havemeyer School.
So it's a home.
Cody.
I just had a question. I thought it might be interesting for Tony to weigh in on this, just to your objectives and how you think about this topic.
Yeah.
Who doesn't want to move to some shiny new joint?
Well, yeah. Let me just clarify a couple of things. First of all, the way it, it's been, we've been working together, the town and the schools. And so the first thing we had to do was go in and analyze, um, how much space we actually needed. So when you think about like the ed spec, how many offices, how big do they need to be? What's reasonable? So we did all of that first. Um, the first building that we actually looked at was close to town hall and, um, their staff, I think from Public Works, um, is their home. But they were helping try to do a test fit and we just couldn't get it to work. We know that we need just for, uh, office type space. It's more than 20,000 square feet. So between 20, 25,000, depending on the layout of the building. But you also go have to really remember that the lower level for us right now is also the warehouse. We have large trucks that come in and out. So, you know, what we do with that piece may be different than what we would do for the other components. But you have to think about that because it is the delivery for the entire district. And when we talk about being like downtown, um, the last, well, the last property that we looked at is, is one that, that I searched for because I went out to do a search. And we're pretty much looking up and down sort of Putnam, you know, not too far, uh, from the center of town. And the big reason for that is we're open 12 months a year. We have a lot of families, people that come to our building to enroll their children. And they need to be, we need to be accessible by like public transport. And, and probably one of the first buildings I actually drove past was one Fred that it was up in Glenville. And, um, and it was just too small. It, we wouldn't even have a quarter of the parking there and it wouldn't be accessible for families. So that's, that's part of the issue, but we're trying to just work together, look at, you know, what are the options? And as somebody who's gotten through a P3 before, uh, when I was in Virginia, we worked on one for over five years. Um, because we needed a new high school because it looked like Havemeyer does right now and it was falling down. And so it was looking at how do you capitalize on part of the land and then get the developer to actually build a brand new high school. And that's what we ended up doing. And so there, I think there are lots of creative solutions. And when you start looking at an RFP, we may very well get an unsolicited RFP that comes well before an RFP because we've talked about this publicly, um, that could happen. And then that has to go through the legal office, but it, it is complex, but I just, I share that and that is 20 to 30,000 square feet. And that's the challenge. You can find a big office building, but they may only have 4,000 square feet available. It's a lot of space for people.
If we, if, if we aren't near public transport, the money we save on rent, we could probably just use it in Uber fund for anyone that needs to get a ride there. I'm like, not even really that, not, not even kidding.
You'd be surprised how many times like I'll be leaving at night, you know, seven or eight o'clock, I'm leaving the office and somebody doesn't realize we're not open and they're coming for an EL class. And like they perhaps don't really speak English and they're trying to figure out how to get in the class. And they've, you know, they've walked a distance or they've taken public transport. So, I mean, from that perspective, yeah, our adult education that happens right there. So doesn't have to be in the center of town, but it just needs to be accessible for families.
I was gonna say, I know that there've been a lot of good ideas and suggestions, uh, shared this evening. And I know, you know, we had read through the report. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. I, I for one, I'm, I'm, I'm open to ideas and suggestions. I don't want to leave that building empty, uh, and then ask the taxpayers, like I said, to fund rent for, for a long, uh, period of time for, you know, ever at that point. Um, but I was gonna say, I, I think one of the most important things is we as a board need our own council, which we've already discussed. Um, we are still in the process of trying to find someone. You know, uh, you know, as Kathleen mentioned before, you don't need approval to, to consider an RFP, but I think we should be sort of also having the opportunity to weigh in on what's included in there. Um, again, I, I still think there's a lot of opportunity for mixed and shared usage. Um, and I really would love to, I know somebody asked about space utilization for all town facilities. I'd also really love to get an understanding of the true cost uh, of renovation, what needs to happen, because I know when we've done reviews and I know when you guys had a review also, there weren't issues. I think it's really, we need to be very careful about the words we use when we're describing that building. It's not deteriorating. Yes, it needs work. Doesn't have mold. You know, we've had issues in, in tons of our town facilities and they're not, you know, it's, so my point is I think we just need to be cautious. We're using certain terms.
I, I would differ, but, but yeah, I, we understand. And I think, I know it's late and I know other people are here and Pete's gonna kill me back there. So.
But no, I, look, I appreciate you both coming in and I think this is a good opportunity, um, and something that needs to be looked at seriously and, um, no one should drag their feet on this. I, I would really like to see the Board of Education in a state of the art educational space for which is, um, accessible to all and is, uh, the right fit and designed for our administrators to collaborate and brainstorm and do the work that they do in a, in a fitting space that works. I think it, the Havemeyer building has served its purpose for a period of time, but like all old buildings, you know, the, the rooms are small, they don't flow. It, it's not, uh, it doesn't provide the function and accessibility that I think the modern day education system and for what we use that building for with our administrators is now designed for. And, and we, we see, saw that with the building and renovations of Central Middle School and how we've completely revamped that and made it for the education system that it provides today. And I think that's the type of building that we should be looking, or the type of space we should be looking for, for our, uh, administrators in the work that they do. And I think we should do it sooner rather than later. I do think that there is some additional work to do, but I do think if we are committed to get, doing this and getting it done, we can do it quickly.
Thank you.
Oh, one more question for Andy before he leaves.
Thank you.
Have, have you evaluated as a committee? I know it wasn't in, in the report that you had sent, but have you evaluated acquiring property for the board if we're handing over an asset that is estimated at a hundred million dollars?
The short answer is no. That was beyond our capabilities. Now, the mandate was to see what we do with the current asset and, and look at alternative space for rent, not, not, not to buy another property.
Might be another suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Castoro, because it's not Mr. Levitan for the monthly financial report.
Good evening. So we took this opportunity with Ben Branyan joining to update the financial report. So you'll definitely see some changes. We're looking to continue to make updates to the report for the June meeting. So if you have any feedback, please let us know. Just a couple of points to make this evening. So for our operating fund, we're continuing to stay in alignment with prior year spending through April. Just want to continue to highlight the great work across the district that's prevented district-wide freeze, including work with principals, coordinators and administration. And although it's pretty early, we're projecting about a ninety-nine percent spend rate for this year. And our requisition entry process closes tomorrow afternoon. SESS continues to remain our largest budget pressure through year end. And then the last point I want to make is we're in the process of requesting an interim appropriation, which really is no impact to the general fund. It's a separate fund with the town. We're heading to the full BET on Monday and the request includes a point of sale system replacement, food and paper supplies through year end, a capital request for GHS oven. And the total is about five hundred and two thousand all in, which is within our fund balance. We just need to request to use it essentially. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I have one question. So because it's within our fund balance, it didn't need to come to the board for a vote on that? Because, because, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, and a lot of the fund balance, well, the fund balance is really due to the excess funds during COVID. We received a lot of state funding and our participation, our participation rate was really high during COVID. So we, the town hadn't budgeted a town contribution for this year. So it's just requesting the excess funds within that balance. So it's fully covered.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Perfect. Having none. Well, why don't we go to the budget transfers then?
Yes. So pretty routine. These are all informational only, over ten thousand dollars, but between the same major object codes. So just let me know if there's any questions.
Any questions? All right, great. Perfect. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, off to our action items. The first one being Havemeyer, I'm sorry Havemeyer, we've been talking way too much Havemeyer, too many ages. Hamilton Avenue School, I will make a motion for the Havemeyer, sorry, Hamilton Avenue School field use request as presented. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, perfect. Would you like me to read the motion into the record, Karen?
I think it'd probably just be helpful.
Yeah. So the motion as stated is the Greenwich Board of Education recognizes the value of the St. Rock Annual Feast for Hamilton Avenue School community. The board hereby agrees that St. Rock Church is permitted to use the Hamilton Avenue School property, field, court and playing facilities for its annual feast to be held August seventh through tenth, twenty twenty-four. St. Rock Church shall, one, seek and receive an event permit from Parks and Recreation. Two, proactively begin to work with TOG Risk Manager thirty days in advance of annual feast. Three, retain or hire Greenwich Police Department for event security and any additional security subject to Greenwich Police Department's official request. And four, it should be noted that this is an annual approval and August of twenty twenty-five is not expected to be available for use, given the work which will be ongoing to repair the Hamilton Avenue Garage. Comment, questions? Please.
So just one quick comment because I have had members of the community reach out. On here, it does say school property, field, court and parking facilities. Just to reiterate that on the court, we can't have the carnival rides or restrooms. Is that the year before last, the asphalt is not thick enough and we ended up having to come back in and repair the asphalt? And much of that was paid for by some donors. And so they have reached out just to make sure we're very clear about that.
That's fine. And I think that working with St. Rocks, that's an easy, make, make sure that they understand. And I'm sure they did. And last year they didn't, they were not on the, the court. So that's fine.
I was gonna say, I believe the town, when, in the meeting, we had the town laid out the entire process. And I believe that part of that is that they have to submit a plan as to where they plan to put things. And I'm assuming the town will ensure that, you know, they're put in the proper location.
Great. Perfect. Anyone else? Okay, call the question. All in favor? Great. Seven zero. Perfect. Moving on. The Greenwich High School Flex Proposal. Dr. Jones, Mr. Mayo, we have to put the motion on the table. Do you want me to make it?
Sure.
That'd be great.
So I'd like to make a motion that the Greenwich High, sorry, that the Board of Education approved the Greenwich High School's Flex Proposal Plan as presented.
I'll second.
And Dana, if you feel like you need to jump in, please feel free because Ralph is not here tonight. But we're just asking for your support for this. We think it is going to be a win for the high school students and staff. And we think it's a great proposal. And of course, we have listened to our student government and we'll make sure that any of those issues that they have brought up will be addressed.
Mister.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, let's give it a guess, college try, I guess is the way I'd put it. But I do hope that we think about some of the things, yeah, I just want to reiterate that the students brought up tonight. Because I know clubs, especially the clubs that were not as well marketed, they made some excellent points. So I hope that we have found a way to do it beyond virtual in the evening, maybe during homeroom, whatever. I'd like that to continue to be analyzed, but like I said, I think that we should give it a shot at this point.
I, I also agree with the children that have spoken. I, I, I am worried that they're going to be doing clubs over Zoom. And I think that they really need to see each other. And, and I know that, that a lot of kids do find it really valuable to make up their tests during flex block. And so I don't know, I'm not in support of this.
Laura.
So I went to Air Academy High School in Colorado Springs, Colorado. We had what was called academy during the day and it was like flex block, but it was in the middle of the day. So if, so it wasn't like kids could leave. I mean, if you didn't need help or you didn't have extra work, you would just eat more french fries in the cafeteria. But, you know, or you'd go to, we had an interior courtyard. But, you know, I, I think, I think we're getting rid of it. But it could be reimagined in, in a different period in the middle of the day. I mean, look, nothing is forever. We're making a change. We could easily change it back. But I will say, I don't want kids meeting over Zoom or Google. I want them with their peers where they belong. But I do think having a period during the day where nobody's leaving does make sense for logistical purposes, but I'm happy to give it a try and see how it goes.
I was gonna say, I, I love, I mean, the idea of having a flex period in the middle of the day is, is wonderful. That's how they usually work, but it would defeat the entire purpose of why we had it, which before it was flex time, it was opportunity block. I had been on quite literally every single committee looking how to revamp opportunity block slash flex time to make it productive for the students. When people were coming up to speak and mentioning something about clubs being run during that time, it's the first I'd heard of it because we were always told that clubs could not run during that period of time because those teachers needed to be in the classrooms available to students who might come for extra help and support. So that was a new one on me, but clubs before flex time always ran after school and were well attended. I know that this generation of high schoolers probably doesn't remember it because it was before their four years at the high school. You know, teachers are still going to be in the building. I like the fact that you guys revised the way, the timing for the late bus, which would help students who want to stay after. And as I said, you know, opportunity block, at one point, they offered, you know, I don't know, they, they had offerings during that period of time for students to go to and attend, I think, and that didn't work. It was, you know, there's a hundred different ways that we've looked at this and a hundred different, and since twenty seventeen, we've been trying to find a way to make this work. I think it's time to just say, you know, it, it was, it was a good idea to try to solve an unintended, you know, consequence of changing the school start time, but it has never worked the way it should, should work. And I'm sure once, if, if we vote to remove it, we will find some unintended consequences of that and we'll have to address that. But adding, I know it sounds ridiculous, but adding two more minutes of academic time per block to students actually is beneficial. I know it doesn't sound like it, but kids start to pack up five minutes early, but they'll still have that opportunity for the extra two minutes, which adds up over a week, over a month, over the course of, you know, the school year. And, and I think that that's far more beneficial than most of the students who try to find a way to exit at two forty-five as it is. So that's just my ten cent opinion.
Anyone else? I'll be the last person to stand in the way. You guys have looked at this for a very long time and the teachers that have reached out to me have suggested that this is a good thing. I do share some of the same concerns that were raised by students, but also the additional time that certain, that students with the IEPs that have additional time for test taking and when that happens and how they're impacted if they have to come before or after school. It just puts an additional burden on not only the students, but the parents. So I do worry about that, but I will give you the benefit of the doubt that you've thought about how all of that will work. I am a little nervous about the departure time all at two fifty, which is, you know, five minutes after CMS gets out. And you have all of that additional traffic with parents and buses. But if all of us know that have Hillside at any, at any point when you release the kids is just a nightmare. So a different traffic study is going to have to be done in order to figure that out. So I, while school impact, while the timing is going to have an impact, we deal with that traffic every day and that's never going to go away unless we do a different traffic study to figure this out, which I'm also in fully support of. So those are my comments. Good? Good. Let's vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, it passes six one.
Can I just make one ten cent comment? Can you just make sure, I know you're going to put this probably in your Friday email, but I think it's exceptionally important that we also have our high school administration reach out to parents specifically within, you know, emails or guidance counselors, so that they're aware going forward that the school time will be ending earlier and they'll have plenty of time to adjust or figure out what needs to be done for their families.
All right. Next up is the new state required update to the evaluation system, PK to twelve. Dr. Jones. Oh, yes.
You want me to do it? I'll make an emotion to approve the new state required update to the evaluation system, PK through twelve plus as presented.
A second. Any discussion? Jones, would you like to say a few words?
Again, we're just looking for your support for this. You heard the teachers that were here at our last meeting, some of the best teachers in our district. They're all supportive of this and the components that are in the program. There are, there are areas that are called non-negotiables by the state and they must be in here so that the state will actually sign off on our plan.
I have a comment. I'm just a little concerned. When I looked through the part with the administrators, it looks, it, it says collaborates with all stakeholders to promote educational equity, dignity and social justice by ensuring all students have access to educational opportunities. Why are we, I'm on page sixty-two. So I'm just a little concerned. Why are, why are we having our administrators being evaluated on social justice? I mean, I feel like we should just be, we should be evaluating them on improving academic achievement.
Yeah, Anne, I don't know if you can answer that better than me. Is that a non-negotiable? Do you know? Yeah, because usually that language comes direct, direct from the state.
I had a question to you. What is, so this is required by the state and you had just, I think, mentioned that the state needs to sign off on this. So can you just elaborate a little bit more on the process of what's being required by the state and what we need to have in place?
So we, PDEC is brand new for the state of Connecticut. They have a document that we must submit to the state to show that we have met the standards of expectation, which our plan does. We've made sure it has all the non-negotiables in it. And the policy committee will also be taking up, you know, the policy that actually says you must follow, follow the law. And then basically the plan is the regulation because that's what we have to do. And so, I mean, it's, it's a requirement.
It just seems like we're codifying wokeness into teaching standards and practices.
In all honesty, you would have to take that up with the state. They, you know, they do use language that we don't generally use in our curriculum documents. And, and you see it in, in the state require requirements, like we talked about this last year in the board and I'm sure you'll remember on like our Black and Latino studies, that was a very different approach than the way the district actually approaches curriculum. But again, there's non-negotiables that are in here for the state in order to get it approved.
So Cody, are you going to give your speech about the state involvement?
Well, I always vote against things that the state requires us to do that it seems redundant. If we're required to do it, why do we have to vote on it? It should just happen.
Yeah, and not only that, I think that the, the one thing I did like about this evaluation program that I thought was different from the past was the opportunity where there was the back and forth, where there was the evaluation component. And then there was the opportunity for the teacher to respond back in, in connection with their evaluation so that there was more of a, a, a give and take. It was more of a, a learning and an educational experience for the teacher. I think that's the only good thing out of this because I do believe that we as an institution, and that's what I'm going to call it, an institution have the wherewithal to provide the right oversight and commentary back to our teachers than having it dictated to us by the state personally.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, it would be interesting because I can't imagine that we've, if this was given to us, that we've really gone through and, and wordsmithed a lot of it. And I was gonna say, I don't think I've ever seen anything in our district with the word social justice written in by us. So I would assume that was from the state, but I, I do understand the concern of having a teacher evaluated on, on that just by the basis of the term. But, you know, from our teachers who presented this last time, they all seemed in favor. They liked the opportunity that it had more, you know, opportunity for reflection and improvement and growth for them as teachers. So, I mean, to me that, that was, you know, a positive.
Any other comments?
You know, just on the state thing, I'm very optimistic that with this whole muffin gate issue at the high school, that some of these kids, maybe the next time they speak, they'll start expanding the scope of federal and state mandates that they're bothered by. So this would be. So this would, this would, not only I'm saying, but it, it, it enlightened them. So, so maybe they'll come back next time, you know, focus on this, this one.
All right, anything else? Call the question. All in favor? One, two, three, four. All against? Okay, passes 4-3.
I know the next item on our agenda is healthy food certification, but I would like to make a, I assume we need to make a motion if we're not gonna do it. Because, so I'm gonna make a motion to remove that from the agenda for tonight. And then I would ask Dr. Jones to explain why we're not gonna vote on it.
I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion. Dr. Jones, can you explain why we're making a motion to remove this from our agenda?
Sure, very quickly. So we just went through a, a food audit, which is required, you know, every so many years with the state. And one of the elements that came out of this food audit now is that they're telling us that they changed the language in their regulations at the state level in 2017. Our last audit was 2016. And now you cannot opt a school out of the National School Lunch Program unless we opt every school out. There's no way we could, we would want to do that. However, we want to do some more checking and make sure, because it is a USDA federal program. So we just want to take due diligence since we have another retreat and then we have another meeting. We need to get some more answers and we do want to check with the attorney that they, in fact, at the state have the authority to do that for a federal program.
Yeah, I'd love to do that because I can't imagine telling the students that they're never getting those muffins again and that they can only have like two nuggets for lunch.
I know our kids are gonna starve.
I would just argue we do bake sale every day with muffins. That's something the way around it.
Or we line up the food trucks. No, that's what we should do. We should line up food trucks on Hillside because you know, who doesn't need more traffic?
Exactly. Only at 2:55 though.
All right, I'm calling the question. All in favor of taking this off of the motion? Great, so 7-0, passes. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to, hold on, where's the piece of paper? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2024-2025 Agenda Plan as presented. Do I have a second? Wendy? Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? 7-0, great. Thank you. That marks the conclusion of our action items. Now we move to the Agenda Plan discussion. Dr. Jones, would you like to lead this off?
So we will need to add, just on the May 30th, we'll need to add the food, the food item again.
Perfect, and it's board goals. Yeah, so we can take the self-evaluate, it's the, the current board goals and our own self-evaluation is the way I read that.
Yeah, well, then, then there was the discussion, I guess, of first read for next set of goals. That's the part I would take off because we are technically supposed to do a self-evaluation.
All right, so we're taking off the 2024-25 BOE Goals First Read. That's what you're taking, we're taking off? Why are we taking it off?
I would assume we haven't met, it's a policy to, you know, group policy, governance hasn't met in order to start working on those. We can always put those forward at the start of this next school year.
That's true.
That's what we did last year. So that, that last year, we approved them at the start of the school year. I mean, granted, we'd gone back and forth. But I think once we, if we do a self-evaluation, even within that discussion, we may find that we don't have to do a lot of work to come up with goals for next year. So I think we may just not want to have it as a first read on that night. I think once we do the self-evaluation, it might lead us to having renewed goals based on what we already have. So we could always put on after that for, you know.
Well, can we have on there a discussion item? Or I guess it's info, but a discussion item on what our goals should be as a board?
Well, if we're talking about current board goals and self-evaluation, I mean, you can, it's like.
It can seep into what we think the goals.
We just want to read, remove first read because we won't have anything to present.
Yeah, I think we just remove first read.
Gives us the opportunity to discuss them. Also, do we need, it's, it's listed as a retreat. We need to add an executive session.
We do need to add an executive session.
Time you want to do that. Want to start the executive session at seven?
Yes.
First two items would be.
That's fine.
Executive session.
Let's do that.
And then on the June 13th, we would, I guess you would mark off action board goals because you would be at that point, correct? I don't think we need to talk about the Agenda Plan, being that it's the last meeting for 2324. And we just did CAC tonight, so that can come off.
I like it already. It's already a shorter meeting. Okay, I'm it. Anybody got a motion to make? Laura, do it. Second. All in favor? 7-0.